Calling the meeting to order. Today is April 19th, Wednesday. The time is 7:09 PM and this is the City Council of Monterey Park and the City Council acting on behalf of the successor agency of the former redevelopment agency. This is our council meeting. So with that, I would like to call the Monterey Park Police Explorers to please lead us in the flag salute. Will everyone please join me and stand?
Attention. Right shoulder up. Forward march. March time, march. Call guard. Mark time, mark. Call guard. Please, then, cut.
Please place your hand over your heart as we pledge allegiance to our amazing nation. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call guard. Return, cut. Call guard. Call guard. Return, put, cut.
Before we continue, some of you might be wondering why we're all wearing jeans. And on tonight's agenda item, one of our resolutions that we have for consideration is Denim Day. So we're all wearing jeans in support of the resolution and in support of Denim Day. Denim Day will be next week and we don't have a council meeting, so we thought it was appropriate to wear it tonight. No, it's not casual night at the council, it's in support of Denim Day. So with that, Mr. City Clerk, will you please do your roll call?
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Mitchell Wang-
Here.
Councilmember Hans Lang-
Here.
Councilmember Peter Chan-
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Stephen Lamb-
Here.
And Mayor Theresa Rial Sebastian-
Present.
All present.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, do we have any agenda additions, deletions, changes, and/or adoptions?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will move into oral and written communications. Mr. City Clerk, can you please let us know how many communicators will we have tonight?
For the oral communication, we have approximately five speakers.
Okay. Will you please call the names of all five speakers? And please bear in mind, oral communications is for you to come up and relay information to us. It is not, since the item is not agendized, we are not at liberty to engage in a conversation with you. It just matters that you would like to bring to the attention of the council. You have five minutes. Five minutes starts when the green light turns on, it ends when the red light turns on. So please be respectful of your time limit. Mr. City Clerk, five names, please.
First speaker is Jesus Ortiz. Second speaker is David Baron. Next speaker is Carl Wong, Shirley Huang, and Richard Mai, the last three actually being members of the Environmental Commission. We'll make that, one more speaker.
Hi, my name is Jesus Ortiz. And, you know, hola amigos, hello, my friends, how are you? I'm representing Cinco de Mayo. And I look at all you in City Council and you all are my friends. You all represent the city and you all put all the time that I know it takes to do it. And I don't come and talk often right here, but I do it and I appreciate all the work you do for the city because I know it's many, many hours. And I know that pay probably doesn't come, not even to one penny an hour. Then I want to invite you to the Cinco de Mayo, to the people who don't know about the Cinco de Mayo, that's a chance to bring you a little bit of Mexico. We'll bring you the food of Mexico, the folklore of Mexico, the Aztec dancers from Mexico that go back to five, six hundred years. Then we also bring you the mariachi. We have piñatas, we have everything. And instead of Cinco de Mayo, it's going to be Siete de Mayo, we'll have it on May 7th. Because we always do it on a Sunday closest to Cinco de Mayo. And we don't want to do it before the Cinco de Mayo because it will be like getting ahead of the time. Then this, we can do it because we have a committee. And all the people who help us all the time, you know, I don't want to name the names. If I forget one, I'll be in trouble. And all of them put a lot of time. The way we do it, we have to raise money. And to raise the money, we sell tacos, we sell raffle tickets, and we have people running like crazy on that day because our Cinco de Mayo is five hours. We start at one and we're supposed to finish about five, which is usually about 5:30. We have a dance contest where people come in and dance to salsa music or something. We give them a trophy. And we raise money, it'll be 34 years that we do it. When the city used to give us $5,000 for the event, it was real easy to hold the event because it cost like six, seven thousand. Now we have to raise the funds, we go places. People like you gave us money, business people gave us money, some businessmen gave us free food, Marie Calenders gave us some pies, Chucky's Pizza gave us pizzas, and we raffle them and get money in exchange for those prizes. And people like you, Peter say, Jesus, it's Cinco de Mayo, come with 100. He said, it's as good as the check on your hands right now. Then Joseph Leon right here, he say, okay, I'll do, I'll match that. So you guys, whatever you guys, it's a donation. We'll put the name of all of you, we'll ask you permission to put the name of all of you wishing, you know, Monterey Park a happy Cinco de Mayo. And then you give us the donation that you want to give us, whenever you want. You just go to, with Robert or Dan or Christina, and then we'll take your donations. And I just wanted to invite everybody. And we put all the effort and energy to have a happy Cinco de Mayo and hopefully you guys go and enjoy it. And if you've never been there, take your little kids because you see a lot of culture that you have in Mexico, you don't know it until you get here and you'll see the little girls dancing, you'll see other people, and then you take a little bit of Mexico with you that day home. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesus. And just to let you know, I will make a donation and I just found out from our Assistant City Attorney, the law firm will also make a donation.
Good evening. I'm here representing myself and a couple of items and then also the Chamber of Commerce. The Greater Monterey Park Chamber is pleased to continue to grow little by little. We have hurdles to overcome and we always will because we're nonprofit, we're a nonprofit organization, so you never are, you're always struggling. But I do want to invite you to attend the grand opening of a new restaurant lounge in Monterey Park. It's, I did get a clipping, put it on there, it's the Chi Colli Lounge. It's located at the Landmark Hotel. You know, they've had a restaurant there that's sort of been empty all these years. People come in and out and we're wishing the best of luck. They got beautiful screens all over the place, you can have a beer and watch the Lakers or the Dodgers and not drink too much, but it, and then order some great food that they're going to be having. So I invite you all to come May the 4th. I'll get a note to the City Manager's office so you can see it. And drop in that evening on the way home and say hello to them. Got a great team of people there who will be, who will be running the event. So the Chamber is helping them get started. Besides the typical ribbon cutting, we do some marketing for them. We put a story already in my paper, we distribute it on the internet, and we'll be doing more. I think there's a story coming out in the Cascade, too. So I hope you're there on May the 4th, that's a Thursday, at 5:30 PM. So just drop in, say hello, help cut the ribbon, and get us going. Two other things, I had my DNA tested and I recommend all of you do that to find out who you really are. Found out I'm 47% Native American, can you believe that? So all my kids want to get scholarships now for college. I said, it's not that kind of Native American, it's more like those guys that are going to be dancing at Cinco de Mayo, Aztecs. But I also got a surprise, I'm 3% European Jewish. Wouldn't you know, that's surprising to me. So you might be Jewish, too, you know, do their DNA, and that's wonderful. I'm really, I'm not Irish. I wanted to be Irish, at least a little bit of Irish, but no Irish blood in me. So that's great stuff. The other thing I did want to tell you about was having to do with the proposal to put a statue in the mid pond, I'm not going to come, I want to go home and have dinner, so I'll tell you right now, I'm opposed to that. I think it's a great idea to put a statue somewhere, someplace, but not at, not at the Cascade. Please, that's a sacred location to most people in Monterey Park. Put it in front of City Hall, we got plenty of grass out there. Rather than putting, turning it into a parking lot like sometimes is proposed, let's put some nice artwork on the City Hall lot. Lastly, I do want to, you heard him talk about the Play Days, Cinco de Mayo, Play Days is coming along, I'm on the Play Days Committee, we got some great people that are going to be in it, we've been pushing really hard. And the invitation is still out for any organization, any family group that wants to be in the Play Days. You can walk it, you can run it, you can ride in a car, you can have your little banner. Even the City Attorney's Office, you'll probably get a lot of cheers when you go down Garvey, your staff is in a Cadillac convertible. That would be great. Yeah, they should. So they know who the City Attorney is. And of course, all the councilmen will be there, we'll have a nice reception that Saturday on the, May the 13th here, normal. We have a grand marshal and I'll get that information out to you. But it's, April, Cherry Blossom is, they're not here, they don't have to, they're going to be jam packed. Cherry Blossom is this weekend, that's the most beautiful event. I wish Cinco de Mayo was that big. And then also the, I don't know, are you going to have somebody talk about the Earth Day celebration? There's going to be a nice, yeah, they will, okay. You've always written in it, so I'm very pleased that you're a writer. One new thing with the Chamber of Commerce, we're going to start a business exchange. It's going to be like a coffee thing early in the morning, just to sit around the table and provide each other with information and news sources. I don't think it'll be a major organization, I think if we had 10, 12 people who can provide information, how they solve problems, how they did it, how they use social media, how they use their attorney, I'd be really pleased. So that, you'll see flyers, it'll probably be May before we're doing that, we do that. So it's a business exchange, roundtable on a Thursday morning, early, 8:30 in the morning, but it'll be over by 9:30, 10 o'clock. Thank you very much, all of you, for your time.
Madam Mayor?
We actually miscategorize one of the speakers and he was one of the first one up, so may I call him-
Yes.
For our other, yeah, okay. Circus Antonian?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and audience. This month is Genocide and Holocaust Month. And this coming Monday is my ancestors were the Turks, Ottoman Turks, killed 1.2 million, it's 102 years old. And this country, even though I'm born here, which this country to me is first, because I wouldn't even go live over there if I had a chance to anyway. Okay, so on my mom's side, it was a great, great character, and he was a priest over there, they killed them off. My, also, there's both sides, any Armenians are living today, they have some family members killed off, yet they, they are denying the genocide. Okay, so remember, when you pay your taxes, $20 goes to Turkey, and they turn on, feed the farmers there, they produce the opium. So they're, so they bring the opium here, and I see your police department over here, too. So that's, that's a proven fact. And those that have survived the genocide, that those grandparents or their parents or our parents back then, they rounded up in the camps in World War II. Okay, so my dad's side is Russian Armenian. So they were in Stuttgart for six years, and no Ruski Pelemye ever called us to tell us the rule for Trump. So that's total garbage, too. And, and, and those kind of things. And then if you really want to get to the nitty gritty, Japan, that bombed Pearl Harbor, that was the country, wasn't the people. So when they show the same movies over and over, find, go to, find some Japanese, have the DVD, go for broke. And the 442, which they were supposed to put a stamp for them, they're the ones liberated Dachau, Hitler's highest concentration camp. And they were the highest-awarded military outfit, which is not really broadcast on the drive-by media anymore. And this 9/11 would have never happened if they were watching, if they were sending them back because their visas ran out. So what they're doing nowadays on this immigration stuff, remember, my, both sides of the family, they had visas when they came here, and if they had anything wrong with them, they sent them back to Ellis Island until they were clear of anything. And this statue, put it over there by your, by your dress shop on Bedex. So when you have your three-day, three-day Chinese New Year, put the statue over there so that when the people walk around, they can see this statue. Not over there, remember, this city's 100 years old, so whatever's been here for 100 years old, leave it alone. And then this sheriff for your homicide, the drive-by media will come over here, do a report. Did they do a report on the police department wanting monies, their monies back that they lost? No. Did they do anything on Marketplace? No. Did they do a report on Substation over there on Pater Grande? No. So I don't, I don't like that sheriff homicide being over there. What's it, what's it, what's it, what's it, what's it doing for us as citizens around here? So they'll drive, they'll take an hour from, do a half-hour report and they drive back. So what I'm trying to say is when this media comes here, do some reports in the city. Because they get, they look at each other's newspapers and those things. So figure it out. You should, this, you should have a media consultant letting know if they're going to come over here, do those reports. And have, have this city on the TV, not in the newspapers. And thank you.
Okay, Carl Wong, Shirley Huang, and Richard Mai.
Good evening, dear Mayor Theresa and councilmembers and city staff, and I guess the residents of Monterey Park also. My name is Carl Wong and then I'm the Chair of the Environmental Commission, and we have our co-chair here, Shirley Huang, and the other Environmental Commissioner, Richard Mai. And I'm, I guess I'm speaking on behalf of the Environmental Commission tonight and just would like to make the announcement regarding the upcoming Earth Day Festival and Bike Ride that's coming up this Saturday on April 22nd. This is the, basically the Earth Day Festival they have been putting outside at the public. The Earth Day Festival this year is going to happen to be on the exact actual day of the Earth, of the Earth Day, which is right on that April 22nd. So with that, hopefully that will kind of, you know, give more sense of spirit and maybe more meanings to the, as to the reason of why we want to celebrate the Earth Day. And, you know, as a way also to educate the public and to increase more awareness about the importance of protecting the environment and preserving our natural resources. And for the event on Saturday, we will have, it will start with the Bike Rides, and we will have two different Bike Rides. One will start at 8 o'clock in the morning for the family-friendly Bike Ride, which will run for about four and a half mile long. And that will be followed with, an hour later, with a Challenge Ride, which will run for about 14 miles long over some of the higher elevation areas in our city here. So you may choose either one of them. So soon after the Bike Rides, then the Earth Day Festival will start at 11 o'clock. And for the Earth Day Festival this year, we picked the theme as the Waste and Recycling. That's in lights of the cities having the two new waste hauling companies, you know, later this year. So that's why we picked that theme as a waste and recycling for this year's Earth Day event. And also, we'll also have over 20 different environmental vendors and exhibitors, which will present the many various environmental issues that are related to our city here. For example, with water conservation, renewable energy, energy savings, obviously also with the waste and recycling, and some of the environmental education for kids. We will actually have the, some of the vendors such as the Sangre del Valle Municipal Water District, that will be here. We will also have the, the three different county agencies that will bring their education about the smart gardening, household hazardous waste, and also the County Sanitation District about wastewater treatment education. And among many other issues, I mean, education such as also, we'll have the East LA Community College, which will come in and then showcase their student environmental engineering project. So with that, we would like to invite the City Council and the public to participate in these Bike Rides. And then, yes, oh, by the way, thank you. The Bike Ride will actually start at, at our library parking lot, and then, and also to attend the Earth Day Festival. So, thank you.
Those are all speakers.
Okay, I thought you had an additional speaker, no?
They were pertaining to the different items.
Okay, thank you. And I want to thank all the speakers. Do my colleagues have any brief comments regarding anything that was said? Because I know all of us, we're going to be really excited to participate in that 14-mile hillside Bike Ride, gentlemen, right? Okay. Councilmember Liang?
Just, just quickly here, something that Dave Baron had mentioned, I did the DNA test as well, and I only came back as being Chinese.
Any other comments, gentlemen? All right, I'm going to, regarding the Earth Day, I just wanted to say, I'm 99.99% sure I'll do the Easy Bike Ride. And I'm trying to convince my husband to partake as well, but I haven't gotten him to agree. And any, any other comments, gentlemen? Okay. So with that, we will continue. Since there are no presentations tonight, we will continue to successor agency items. And I know there's a lot of you here to speak, so I'll lump item 2A and 2B. A is Successor Agency Monthly Investment Report, and 2B is Successor Agency Minutes. Is there any discussion or is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Great. Moving on to City of Monterey Park and St. Calendar, there is none, there is no public hearing, no old business. Moving on to new business, item 6A is the Warrant Register. Is there discussion or a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Okay, next is 6B, Monthly Investment Report. Given that this is the investment report for the first quarter of this year, I would like an update or summary from our City Treasurer, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and of course residents of Monterey Park. Joseph Leon, City Treasurer of Monterey Park. I went during the last few weeks, we did purchase, I believe, a couple of CDs. The rates remain stable at this point, so we're looking at the market, so we're going to see what happens with the market as far as making more purchase. Right now, most of you, look at your, your, I guess iPads, most of the funds are still with the county pool. And I'm still looking at other areas that we can invest in that are secured for the benefit of the city. That's, any question? I'm going to answer.
Well, thank you. And, yeah, I would like for you to also look at other investments, not just CDs. I don't want anything too aggressive, obviously, but we've got to work on ways to increase our investments. We have a lot of expenses that are coming up, and really, our general fund, as you know, we're going to be having budget hearings pretty soon. Those general funds are very limited. I'm not saying to go crazy and start buying swampland in Florida, I would always discourage us from doing anything like that, but something perhaps, you know, that would provide a, maybe a higher yield while still staying on the safer side.
Yeah, we actually, we always look at other options, but of course, many of the other options have higher risk.
Right.
And I know, I know the council is very conservative regarding the risk factor, as it was, it was a major issue, just, just allow, the council told allow me to invest in the county funds-
Right.
-before. But, yeah, we'll keep, we'll continue looking and pass the next, the next month's investment report, we're bringing up some other options for the council to consider.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, gentlemen? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Is there a motion, I'll make a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Okay, great. And then we will move on to City Council Minutes. Item 6C, I did relate to the City Clerk that there was one typographical error, which they have mentioned they will correct. Are there any other comments or a motion, gentlemen, to approve?
Move to approve.
All second, please vote.
Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Great. Now we'll move on to 6D, Requesting a Decision from the City Council on Whether to Approve or Deny a Proposal by Equitable Vetrines, a nonprofit art organization, to place a statue named Eve halfway up the Cascades Park Hill. Staff report, please.
Dan Costley, our short timer, will be doing this presentation. And I say that tongue-in-cheek because this will be his last council meeting as a director. So I'm embarrassing him at this point in time, but he will do the presentation. His last day is actually on Friday.
He is retiring. Yep. And actually, before you do the presentation, can you just share some words with us about your experience here in Monterey Park? Mr. Costley? Look, interim city manager said, we've got to milk it, this is the last time we get to bug you, so is there something you'd like to share with us? What are you going to do as you retire? Where can we find you in your retirement? Or do you not want to be found?
Well, my plans in the immediate future, I'm going to go see the Kentucky Derby for the first time in my life.
Wow.
I've never been to the Grand Canyon, I've never been to Yosemite, I'm doing both of those.
I don't.
And I'm going to Las Vegas, which I've been to many, many, many times. So that's my game plan, then I'm going to come back, I'm going to find something close to home so I don't have to ride on the 710 freeway or get up at 5:30 in the morning. I could do, I could be taking tickets at Anaheim Stadium or doing surveys at Disneyland or helping a child read. So we'll see what, what that brings. And it's been a very interesting 17 years here. I started as a special events manager for a city of 60,000 that has more special events than cities four times its size, so. So I appreciate the support of the council. I appreciate the support of the millions of volunteers out there. I started making a list, and I thought there's no way I could read all these. I'd run my five minutes out. And the support of the executive staff and everybody else, I appreciate.
Well, Dan, I have to say, you will be severely missed. I mean, we look to you so much for so many of the activities here, just, you know, leadership, feedback. I think that the reason we have so many events here in the city of Monterey Park is due to you. It's great leadership, and you have a great team, you and Robert. And I think our commissions, look, we have Earth Day, we have Cherry Blossom, and we have Cinco de Mayo coming up. I mean, one after another, we constantly have events. So I really, really want to thank you. And I know we've worked really closely on some of the cleanups, the concerts, I mean, you name it, you're part of it. So you are part of Monterey Park, and you will always be part of Monterey Park. You have a home here.
Thank you.
So, thank you. And I'm going to take this a little bit out of order, gentlemen. I know you all want to say something. So Mayor Potem, Stephen Lamb.
Yes. Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for your services, 17 years. It means a lot to the city of Monterey Park. I believe that the city of Monterey Park has the most of the events outdoor compared to other cities in LA County, because we celebrate Cinco de Mayo, we celebrate the Lunar New Year, we celebrate Cherry Blossom, we celebrate everything here. So we've got like double or triple of holidays here. I'm sorry, the events here. So Dan was a very respected director from all the council, I believe. Whenever we need you, you're there. And you are busy, but you always get back to us on time. And we know that you're going to enjoy your life, going to some of the places that I've never been to, to Yellowstone. Can you believe? Yeah. So I wish you well. I wish your family well. I want you to come back and visit us whenever you can. We will miss you, and thank you for your service again.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peter Chan.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank our director, Dan Costley, for so many years, 17 years of services. And I know there will be a lot of good comments on you, but I just wanted to point out one thing, is that we have your cell phone number. And because, you know, in any events, all the time, there's some kickups, some, you know, something goes wrong. Whenever there's some, always is not so smoothly. But with your cell phone, good that you always answer your cell phone. So when there's something happen, or, you know, sometimes in the empty theater, there's some performances, I remember, and the light was not on, and the performance is going on, and people were so excited, and there's no light, and people cannot see. And people got excited and nervous, and the performers are not happy. And then I called you, and you answered the phone, and you tell the staff, and just to turn on the lights. I know it's not easy. I know it is not just flip on the switch. It's not that easy. They have a computer to plug in the lamppost and do some programs to turn on the spotlight. So you did that. It's not just first time, every single time, that you were responsive, and you're on top of everything, and I really appreciate, you know, all your efforts. And I know that when I first come in, you know, before I got elected as a city council, you're, you know, the same size as now. But then you slimmed down quite a lot, and now you get back to your original shape. So I hope, yeah, I wish you continue the walking. I know you walk a lot, and continue, you know, on your retirement. Be healthy and be happy, and, you know, enjoy your retirement life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hans Liang.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan, I remember when we first met, I was serving on the Recs and Parks Commission. That's when Harry Panagiotis was still here. And, you know, you've always been, I mean, I remember first meeting you, and you were a very kind of quiet, mild-mannered person. And then after we, Peter and I got elected, I knew eventually you took over for Harry. And during the time that you've served in that position, I really want to commend you on the hard work. And I know, you know, with all the events that we're talking about, none of them are, well, some are easier than others, and some are harder than others, probably more than less. But you have been very diplomatic, and you've done your job very well. I think that's why we're all going to miss you. It's kind of a bittersweet thing. We're happy that you're going to be going into your retirement, enjoying your life, but at the same time, we're sad that we're going to be losing a family member from our city here, you know? And for sure, when you're gone, I'm sure there'll be times when I'll need to call you up to get you, get some tips on the craps, on the craps tables. I know you're really, you're really into that, and you're really good at that. So maybe one of these days, we can go out to Vegas together. So congratulations, Dan, and thank you for the many years of contribution to the city, and thank you for your positive attitude working with everybody.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Yen.
Okay, Dan, you know the question I'm going to ask you. In the 17 years that you've seen council members come and go, who's your favorite? Dan, admit it. No, I just, I won't put you on the spot. But thank you for your 17 years of service. Thank you for your 17 years of service. And Dan, and you will agree with this. There's two personas that I have. People who know me as an elected official, who would watch the council meeting, and my best friends will say, "Are you that serious at your council meetings?" I said, "Yeah," because I serve the constituents. Because they don't see that side. My best friends will see the joking side that I present to Dan sometimes. Sometimes I would call Dan impersonating other council members, just to see how Dan would react. I just want to see how Dan would react with past council members, but I would imitate the voice, and Dan would fall for it. So I go, "Dan, that's how you talk to the other people? With mister or, you know?" And so Dan sees that side of me. I know there's other department heads that also see that. But thank you, Dan, because you're the one department head that we interact with the most, because you're at our weekend activities. And I can't commend you enough for what you have provided to all of us in the support that you've given over the past 17 years. Thank you, and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the comments, and I appreciate the assistance of the department staff. They really put everything together. I just kind of walk around and point stuff out. But I appreciate the help and the volunteers and everybody, and thank you.
Awesome. Let's give Mr. Dan a big round of applause.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so with that, we need a staff report, Dan.
Okay, well, tonight I come in front of you to ask the city council for approval or denial of a proposal that was made by Equitable Vitreens, a nonprofit organization who wishes to place a statue named Eve halfway up the Cascades Park Hill, which includes providing all maintenance and all potential liability. And if that is approved, they authorize the city manager to execute a license agreement between the city and the Equitable Vitreens. Basically, what happened in this is back several months ago, the representatives of Equitable Vitreens came in front of the Recreation and Parks Commission and asked for permission to replace the Athena statue at the top of the Cascades waterfall, and wanted to put this other statue up there for a period of time to elicit reaction to art. And I'm going to let them, the two members of that group, when they will be coming up to speak, Matt Connolly and Ellie Lee, they came and talked to the commission about that. And the first time this happened was, they talked during oral communication, so we couldn't really agendize that. But they came to additional meetings afterwards and had made their case, and they've gone out in the community and looked for people who would support what they wanted to do. They later came to a city council meeting and decided that they would maybe modify that proposal, and they, instead of changing out the one statue for the other, they would ask that their statue of Eve goes about halfway up the hill. And if I'm getting this a little bit wrong, I'm sure they'll clear that up for us. So the Recreation and Parks Commission, at a meeting on January 10th, voted unanimously 4-0 to support this, the original proposal. And as I said, that got modified. And we have had people come to the council meeting and spoke against it, and I know that they do have some people here tonight to speak in favor. So we also contacted them about, one of the ideas that had been floated is put the statue at another location somewhere in the city. And Mr. Matt Connolly noted that the way they work this project is they build the concept of site-specific artworks, and each site demands a unique approach and a unique artwork. Because of this, it does not make sense for us to place, consider placing Mr. Wang's sculpture at a different site. So we're really kind of at a approve or deny point, but I know that they, Equitable Vitreens has put in their speaker cards. So that's basically what's happened. That's where we're at now, to ask the council for a decision one way or the other. And that concludes my remarks on the subject. And if, again, I know there are people here to speak on this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Costley. And since this is a proposal by Equitable Vitreens, would they like to come up and say a few words to the council? Please, if they can do so now.
You were, both Ellie and I were each.
You know, you need to speak into the microphone, because this is all being recorded.
Sure. Both Ellie and I were prepared to speak for five minutes on the issue. That's what we were told we would be able to do.
Well, as, since this is your proposal, you can come up and speak. I don't know if... Okay, but as far as time limit on their presentation? Okay, given, how many speakers do we have on this agenda item?
We have approximately 25 speakers.
Okay. I'm presuming, if you can please combine your speeches. I know last time you came in, you spoke before council. If you can do that as well, because we'd like to hear what you have to say before the others present their comments.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll just read my own. Okay. Good.
And by the way, sir, you forwarded to all of us council members a little booklet here, which I presume my colleagues all read. So thank you.
And that's included in the staff report as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Pretty much, all of that. Good evening, all. My name is Matt Connolly, and I am co-founder of Equitable Vitreens, a Los Angeles-based nonprofit organization committed to informing and expanding the collective understanding of art in public places. We're honored to have our proposal for public art for consideration by the council this evening. I'd like to describe to the council and to the community just what our organization is proposing and why, and to address the concerns raised by Mr. Costley in his staff report. Equitable Vitreens proposes to install Eve, a sculpture by Chinese artist Xu Wang, in the fountain at Heritage Falls Park for a duration of one year or less. Eve was produced at a marble quarry and commercial sculpture factory in Kyu Yang, China in 2015. To produce Eve, Wang exhumed a discarded statue of the biblical figure and proceeded to re-carve it in the image of a female Chinese artisan employed at the factory. Equitable Vitreens has received letters from representatives of LACMA, Moca, and Monterey Park's own Vincent Price Art Museum, each testifying to the artistic value of Wang's sculpture and Equitable Vitreens' proposal. We've developed an unintrusive plan for securely installing Eve. When Wang's sculpture is removed at the end of its stay at Heritage Falls Park, the fountain will be no different than it was before this sculpture was installed. Equitable Vitreens is prepared to cover all expenses related to this project. The Vincent Price Art Museum has generously offered to host a series of educational sessions which will provide members of the community with opportunities to learn about and discuss issues related to Equitable Vitreens' project and public art in general. All programming will be free and open to the public. Equitable Vitreens was founded on the belief that art provides unique and essential insights. It is our feeling that the profound educational potential latent in art is too often limited by the rarefied context in which it is exhibited. By identifying unconventional sites for the display of artworks and engaging with populations in close proximity to such sites, we aim to use art as a means of creating a more thoughtful, engaged, and independently-minded populace. In opposition to so many of the messages with which we are bombarded on a daily basis, art maintains a level of deliberate ambiguity. It does not tell us what to think, but its very existence acts as a prompt for thought Staff's claim that the designation, and this is in reference to the staff report, staff's claim that the designation on the historic registry could be rescinded if the proposal changes the historic nature of the Cascades is highly misleading. I spoke at length on multiple occasions with Amy Crane, a state historian and staff member of the Historical Registration Unit, and she denied with certainty the notion that a temporary and unintrusive alteration could ever compromise a site's place on the register. When I pushed her for an example of a situation in which a site's place, a site's designation could be imperiled, she resorted to a hypothetical. If a building was listed on the register and the building burned to the ground, its designation could potentially be compromised. Staff is correct when he states that the state does not have jurisdiction over this proposal. It's determined on the local level. Regarding staff's claim that our project serves to compromise a state grant for Hardin El Encanto, which was dispersed some 30 years ago, I can only say that the attendant paperwork filed with the State Department of Parks and Rec, which was not included in the report, clearly establishes Cascades Park and the Encanto as two different sites, and clearly identifies the grant money as being allocated solely for the Encanto. Finally, it should be noted that the petition included in staff's report was composed in response to an earlier version of our proposal, in which we requested to temporarily replace Athena with the Eve statue. The petition states that Athena should not be removed or replaced, a sentiment that Equitable Vitreens now shares. Accordingly, I don't think the petition has much bearing on our conversation today. I also ask the council to observe that each page of the petition is presented in duplicate, giving the impression that there are twice as many names listed as is actually the case. So that's pretty much it. We ask the city council to please give us the opportunity to share this important artwork with the residents of Monterey Park, LA County, and beyond. Thanks.
And I have a few things to say as well. I'm Ellie Lee. I'm the executive director of Equitable Vitreens. Thank you all for considering our proposal tonight. And thank you to everyone who is in attendance at this meeting and also making a statement. Equitable Vitreens' proposal was born out of our admiration for the unique beauty of Heritage Falls Park. In the six months that have passed since we first identified the park as a potential site for public art, our admiration... site for public art, our admiration has grown to encompass the city of Monterey Park in its entirety. Matt and I first encountered Heritage Falls Park while driving on Atlantic en route to Dimson this past fall. We recently, or we had recently resolved to expand equitable vitrines' mission into, extending into the municipal realm, and we were thus on the lookout for potential locations for public art. We were struck by the park's unique and highly-developed aesthetic qualities and immediately began to conduct research on the site and the city with the intention of developing a proposal that would reflect and respond to the character and history of this place. We visited Monterey Park's delightful historical museum and spoke at length with a member of the Historical Society, who gave us some background on Peter Snyder, his Midwick View Estates, and the placement of Monterey Park's current Athena statue. We learned that the present-day statue installed in 2005 by Mary Deuce and Chuck Carter is, in fact, a replacement for the long-lost original, which Snyder erected to honor his Greek heritage. As we continued to visit the park and speak with San Gabriel Valley residents, we became interested in the fact that the replacement sculpture, widely and unquestioningly referred to as Athena, possessed none of the aesthetic qualities traditionally associated with the Greek deity. Art historically, Athena is signified through her crusted helmet, her shield and spear, and a cloak adorned with the head of Medusa. As far as we can tell, Monterey Park's resident statue bearing a garland more closely resembles a minor Roman goddess associated with fertility. But the lesson that we identify in all of this is that artworks are merely objects, and that meaning is conferred by collective acts of interpretation. In this way, art history resembles human history in general. Dominant narratives emerge, but never entirely vanquish the complexity of our shared existence and experience. We chose to build our proposal around Xu Wang's sculpture Eve because it points to the notion that an artwork can at once refer to an imagined or mythical past and a constantly-unfolding present. By putting Eve in conversation with Monterey Park's Athena, we hope to encourage visitors to Heritage Falls Park to think deeply about the stories we use to interpret our existence in the world, and to become more aware of who and what those stories assign value to, and how and why. On a formal level, we think that Wang's Eve, accompanied as it is with a snake, would serve as a subtle reference to Peter Snyder's original Athena, on account of the fact that depictions of the Greek deity traditionally feature a snake. For us, this project unexpectedly took on an additional level of significance when we received word that a number of residents spoke out against our project at the city council meeting on February 15. We were grateful for their input and proceeded to amend our proposal in order to address their concerns. However, the most prominent item under discussion that day, Resolution 7A declaring Monterey Park's dedication to preserving the rights of all persons within its jurisdiction, revealed to us the true character of the city, which we have come to see as illustrative of the noblest qualities of life within democratic society. Upon reviewing video documentation of that meeting, we were inspired beyond words by the thoughtful, articulate, and passionate display of opinions, both for and against the resolution, that were respectfully shared by residents at that meeting. As an organization, we claim no political affiliation. We are, however, utterly and unapologetically committed to the principles of independence and self-betterment that lie at the heart of participatory democracy. We believe that through its very presence, art can produce better, more engaged citizens, and so we ask the mayor and the city council members to grant us the opportunity to temporarily place Xu Wang's Eve in Heritage Falls Park. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, how many speakers do we have for oral communications?
We have approximately 25 speakers.
Okay. Does that include written correspondence, or is that just speakers?
No, there were, I believe, six written correspondence that the council already has.
Okay, thank you. Really quickly, can you just read or just tell us whether they're for or against the written correspondence that you have there, so we can get those done?
The written?
Yes. Who is it from, and are they for or against it? Because the council can read through them.
Okay. In terms of against, I believe there were two against, and in support of...
By who?
Huh?
The two that are against?
Oh, who are they?
Yes.
Okay, one is from Marion Sumimoto, who's the secretary to the Historical Society of Monterey Park. The second one...
Is Johnny Thompson?
Johnny Thompson was the other, yes.
Okay.
And he also signed up as a speaker.
And those that support?
In support, we have the Henry Lowe, representing Garvey School District. We have Mr. Rando Avila, as well as, I'm not sure it's male or female, but the Guan Rong, Director, One House Art Experience Museum, and Tara Kradzchnak, Pitzer College.
Okay, thank you. Since we have so many speakers, I'm going to limit the time to three minutes each. Is there any discussion on that, gentlemen, or in agreement? Okay, so if you can please call all 25 speakers, so we can get their names. Once again, you'll have three minutes. Three minutes starts when the green light turns on, and will end when the red light flashes. Who's calling, 25?
First speaker, Teresa Amador. Second speaker, Henry Lowe.
Wait, you're going to need to be a little slower, okay? Henry Lowe?
Okay. Nancy Akuri. Matt Connolly.
Well, Matt already spoke.
Okay, so, we also have Ellie Lee, also signed up. Erin Kristovol. We have Johnny Thompson. Sarah Chow. Rick Moore. Paul Perez. Natalie James. Jim Iwaki. Stevie Weinstein-Ferner. Bill Seeger. Hannah Kahn. C. Yu Sun. Kat Yang. Carol, I'm going to assume that's Chin. Thomas Wong. Danny Wu. Larry Sullivan. Rong Wen Liu. And Delario Robinson.
Okay, thank you. So, if you could call the first speaker, Teresa Amador, and I'm going to kindly ask the speakers if you feel comfortable in providing this information to us. We'd like to know if you're a resident of Monterey Park, so if you could let us know if you're comfortable with that information being released to the council. Thank you.
Dan Cosley, congratulations and a happy retirement.
Thank you.
Mayor, city council members, here we are at a historic junction, whether it allow equitable vitrines to damage and disturb a recorded historical designation at Cascades Park by installing a statue in the middle of the waterfall. On November 13th, 1998, Cascades Park was registered with the state of California as a historic site and is in our city seal. It is clearly documented that Cascades Park is an uninterrupted site from El Portel to Athena at the top of the Cascades Park. Equitable Vitrines claims they wish to offer educational lectures about their proposed statue. Such a statue would damage and disturb this uninterrupted view. To suggest that they will bring tours to Cascades implies that there is an economic benefit. I am not opposed to educational lectures. I am a strong advocate of education. My husband served on the Alhambra School Board of Education for 12 years. I am currently vice president of the Library Foundation and was actively involved in Alhambra Council PTA for over 15 years when my children were little. Both our children are college graduates. Education is important. However, to disturb a recorded historical site is not in the best interest of Monterey Park residents. I encourage you to select an alternative site to display the statue. I have lived in the Midwick Estates area since 1966. As a resident, we value and respect our privacy. We do not need tour buses to our residential neighborhood. We do not need unwanted debris left by tourists or increased traffic in our residential neighborhood. We do not need tourist visitation in R1 zone with no public restrooms. I just read one of the letters submitted by East LA College, and they're saying that they're encouraging thousands of residents and students to attend. So, remember, council members, you all live in R1 residential neighborhoods. Please do not make our neighborhood a tourist attraction. As residents, we do not wish to become a tourist destination. We also feel that you should consider putting the statue at City Hall where it would have more visibility and educational opportunities, as well as be safe from vandalism. To place a statue in a historical site in R1 zoning would create undue havoc and potential for increased crime and visibility to a quiet residential neighborhood. Mayor, council members, thank you for listening to our concerns and help us protect our R1 residential neighborhood. Thank you.
If you could put a pin on this next speaker, we're trying to figure out if Councilmember Liang is within 500 feet of the Cascades and may therefore have to recuse himself. It's a very, the map is very small, so we're trying to figure that out. You okay? Okay, perfect. Okay, next speaker? And just for the record, he is beyond 500 feet, so he's okay. Okay.
Henry Lowe?
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Henry Lowe at 417 Mooney Drive, Unit D, Monterey Park. Yes, I am here speaking actually in support of the equitable vitrines' proposal to temporarily install artist Xu Wang's sculpture of Eve at the Cascade Fountain. I believe this proposal is meant to complement the existing sculpture of Athena, and if anything, represents an opportunity for Monterey Park residents to learn the role in which public art and the spaces that houses them play in understanding an area's history, its culture, and how this dynamic evolves over time and is preserved. No one here will dispute that the Cascade Fountain is an important iconic landmark. I mean, the seal has the cascade, and we all acknowledge the incredible significance to Monterey Park's history, past, and present, and future. But the cascade issue we acknowledge has also been a bear witness to the city as a gateway for generations of newcomers from throughout the United States and around the world who have called Monterey Park its home. It is therefore fitting to have the Cascades as a focal point, to have a conversation about our community's rich history of diversity and inclusion, as well as its current role as a global cultural gateway. The installation of this Eve statue will be installed in a manner that would require no permanent alteration of the Cascade Fountain and Heritage Falls Park. I think it's important to note, has been spoken by Matt Connolly during his presentation, that art and its inclusion in our public facilities have a long history in the United States. Therefore, for me as a resident of Monterey Park, I hope that you will recognize and approve the proposal, and also acknowledge its potential to further enhance Monterey Park's image as an inclusive and dynamic city, as well as its potential to serve as a learning tool. As has been acknowledged, East LA College has expressed an interest. And again, public art should be meant to allow all residents to feel accessible to their community, and a public space is there open to all residents. And so, there is inherent potential for people to, I think, to develop better appreciation of the civic landmark that exists in their cities. So, I do believe that this is an incredible opportunity. Certainly, of course, there are residents who have concerns, and those concerns should be acknowledged, and I hope that the city will see the, again, the potential benefits to this, and certainly work with this resident in a way that will hopefully make everyone happy. Thank you.
Nancy Akuri?
Good evening, I'm Nancy Akuri, longtime resident of Monterey Park, also the widow of Frank J. Akuri. He created art from the moment he could hold a crayon in his hand until his death in July 1996. And he had a master's degree in art, studio art. And as an artist, he created and created. I do not know what Ellie May's masters in art is. Is she a true artist? Or does she just teach history, art history? Or does she solicit other artists' work for her profit? And also, I'm against it, and I want to know why did Rando Avila, a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, fail to do his homework and remember his childhood history when he made a motion on the January 10th, 2017, to the city council to recommend the equitable vitrines, remove the statue of Athena from the Cascade Waterfall, and was formally called Heritage Falls Park, and replace it with a statue called Eve at their request? When you view our hidden jewel on El Portel, you can see Peter Snyder's creativity, now called the Cascade Waterfall, with a replacement statue of Athena, the Greek goddess of wisdom and war. And for people who say that, oh, I will say, a true artist never destroys or replaces another artist's work. That is a criminal sign in the art world. And also, if you look at the Cascade Waterfall dedication plaque, there's good old Rando Avila's name there, as one of the Parks and Recs Commissioner who worked on this project. And since he ran for city council in March, he declared that he was raised in Monterey Park. I want to know why he would even recommend the equitable vitrines destroy our hometown history. And I want to know, these people say they don't want to place their Eve at City Hall, or at the garden at Langley Center, or place her at the art corner of the library, if the board approves it, or at the top of the stairs of Barnes Park Amphitheater, or in the backyard of Garvey Ranch House. There's a lot of secure locations for them. Better yet, let them put Eve in the Vincent Price Museum, since they are so longtime supporters. Please do not vote to destroy our beautiful Cascade Waterfall and alter our hometown history with their Eve. Thank you.
My name's Erin Kristovol, and I'm reading on behalf of Pilar Tompkins-Rivas, who's the director of the Vincent Price Art Museum. As the director of the Vincent Price Art Museum at East Los Angeles College, it is my duty to be cognizant of projects happening in our city that closely align with our museum's mission and philosophy, and to provide support and community partnership where appropriate. VPAM serves as a unique educational resource for the diverse population of Monterey Park. Through our exhibitions, collection, programming, and preservation efforts, we promote knowledge, inspire creative thinking, and deepen the understanding of and appreciation for the visual arts. Equitable Vitrines' public art proposal for the temporary installation of Zhu Wang's sculpture in the Cascade Fountain at the Heritage Falls Park is a thoughtful and invigorating project that will undoubtedly contribute to the enrichment of Monterey Park's residents. I am writing to express my support on this project and have confidence that it will be executed in a professional manner. Equitable Vitrines has clearly expressed its goals to catalyze conversations and provide educational programming in Monterey Park's community, which encompasses the project's themes. Zhu Wang's Eve sculpture, a portrait of a female stone sculpture... Zhu Wang's Eve sculpture, a portrait of a female stone sculpture who works in a factory that mass produces marble figures, was created at the very same quarry as the Athena sculpture currently housed in the fountain. It would be a jester of inclusivity, open-mindedness, and progressive thinking to allow for the sculptures to coexist in the fountain for a limited period, with the aim of inspiring meaningful conversations about the invisible labor behind the objects we purchase globally, what it means to be a hospitable city today, and acceptable depictions of beauty in public art. I have been a Monterey Park resident for four years and drive on Atlantic Boulevard daily. This subtle, considered, and temporary introduction of a new sculpture will bring many new visitors to the historic, often overlooked, park. We have invited Equitable Vitreins to make use of our lecture hall for impactful programming that will be free to the public. All of us at VPAM hope the City Council will vote in favor of allowing Equitable Vitreins to fulfill its mission to share contemporary artwork with populations that do not normally engage with art on a regular basis. We fully support and look forward to having a compelling reason to direct thousands of ELAC students to Heritage Falls Park to experience a critical historical site and interact with an energizing public artwork. Thanks.
The title of my article is "The Illegal and Impropiety Issues That Surround the Statue Called Eve." Item one, history matters. In 1989, the Monterey Park City Council protected the Cascades with Resolution 9828. This resolution sets out to preserve the El Encanto District, which Cascades is a part of, because it is historically significant and it provides a link with the history of this community and benefits of future generations. That's a quote. It is highly improper, therefore, to alter the Cascades in any way, including installation of a temporary half-naked religious statue named Eve, which will set a bad precedent in favor of improper future alterations to Cascades. Item two, safety matters. Graffiti, permanent marble defacement, and theft are park concerns we need to avoid. Item three, exclusionary experiences matter and the separation of church and state. The four-and-a-half-foot re-carved statue is destined to have a contentious existence in America on federal, state, and municipal properties due to it being religiously biased and exclusionary. The separation of church and state is a fundamental tenet of our way of life in America. Eve is a unique and intriguing representative of a Judeo-Christian icon, but she will be experienced as exclusionary and will offend members of our community. As a case in point, the same artist has had his work displayed at the Jewish Museum in New York. Item four, the Brown Act matters. We neighbors previously submitted hundreds of signed petitions to the city opposing the installation of the statue at Cascades. The promoters of the statue promised neighborhood support but did not produce it. Also, the Parks and Rec Commission voted unanimously to have this issue proceed to the City Council with the prerequisite that neighborhood residents would be supportive, but we were never notified by anyone. The Historical Society was the only entity directly notified. On February 4th, 2017, the Society's board replied in part, I quote, "While the idea of exposure to art sculpture is a unique idea, those of us on the board felt that the Cascades was not the ideal place for this project," close quote. The vast majority of Monterey Parkians do not have spare time to study and follow council meeting agendas. Localized, important, and likely controversial matters require better local neighborhood notification. Recreation and Community Services Director Dan Costley submitted a staff report to Parks and Rec Commission, which states in part, "As the city icon, changes to the waterfall may be resisted by the public. It is recommended that the Commission survey the residents for their opinion." The non-follow-through by Commissioners-
Johnny, if you could please wrap it up. The red light is flashing.
All right. It is clearly violation of the Brown Act. Finally, item five, the ACLU matters also. Eve belongs in a church or museum, possibly at the Huntington Library and Gardens in San Marino in Monterey Park. However, the only possible place it will be-
Johnny, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off. We have a lot of speakers, but thank you so much, and we have your letter, which we've read.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Chow. She'll be followed by Rick Moore.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Chow. I am a third-generation Chinese-Filipina-American and a second-generation Angelino, as well as a member of the Asian Women's Art Collective, Asian Mamas Working in the Arts. My family lives in Monterey Park and the surrounding San Gabriel Valley area, and because of the Asian-American community here, I grew up with the great privilege of the richness of our cultural traditions here. I am a working visual artist with a Bachelor of Arts in studio art, and I was engaged in the visual arts from a very young age. As a young, creative Asian American, I was constantly looking for representation of people like me, women, Asian faces. And while rare, it was thrilling, validating, and imminently hopeful for me to find representation of Asian Americans in my city and in concrete and real works of art. I'm an artist today because of moments like these. I grew up regularly enjoying public parks here, and I understand that public parks are for the people in the community. I believe that a work by a Chinese artist with a Chinese subject will have a positive impact on our park and in the community as a whole. I am also working in sculpture conservation as a professional and have worked on historical, architectural objects and projects myself. With hands-on conservation experience, I can vouch for Equitable Vitreins' materials and conservation-grade, non-invasive plan for the attachment and placement of Eve in the fountain at Heritage Falls Park. In summation, as a multi-generational community member of this city and as a working artist and conservation professional, I believe in Equitable Vitreins' proposal to install Zhu Wang's Eve, and I believe that it is thoughtful, historically appropriate, and imminently fitting to the city of Monterey Park and the site of the fountain at Heritage Falls Park especially. I expect a positive effect in the community, both during the installation and long after the duration of the public exhibition of this work, and I strongly support the proposal. Finally, I would like to say that your motto is pride in the past and faith in the future, and I urge council members to honor the park's historic nature by making history via the installation of Eve, as Equitable Vitreins has proposed. Thank you.
Rick Moore, be followed by Paul Perez.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. My name is Rick Moore. I'm a PGA golf professional and Director of Instruction at Monterey Park Golf Club. I'm here representing Benjamin Park, and he has basically constructed a letter that I would like to read to you. Dear City Council of Monterey Park, I'm the owner of Monterey Park Golf Club, a gem in the Southern California golf scene. I would like to express my strong support for the Equitable Vitreins' public art proposal. Heritage Falls Park is not as well-known as it should be, and I believe an interesting art project could be instrumental in getting more people to visit. As the owner of a large and established business in Monterey Park, I support endeavors that show the rest of Los Angeles County that our city is alive and up to date. It is good for business, foot traffic, and our public image. At the Monterey Park Golf Club, we have completely rebuilt our golf course and renovated our facilities so that golfers could experience a new feel and not be exposed to the tired, same-old golf course. I think this art project would give the park a refreshing and interesting feel and will draw visitors from outside and within the city. The message of inclusion is very positive, and I would like to think allowing that Eve sculpture to visit the Athena sculpture in the fountain or reunite would be a good statement that honors the Asian-American presence in Monterey Park. Thank you for your time, Benjamin Park Owner, Monterey Park Golf Club.
Paul Perez, he'll be followed by Natalie James.
My name is Paul Perez. I've lived here in the city of Monterey Park since the early '60s. I moved here from Echo Park Silver Lake area in Los Angeles because I fell in love with the city, the community, and I love the history of the city. Let me ask you a question. If he had the original painting of the well-known Mona Lisa, and you have enjoyed it for 100 years as originally painted, would you allow someone to touch it or tell you that the Mona Lisa should be used to recruit more art students by adding something, even though it's artistic, to the painting? Maybe a Bugs Bunny or a Mickey Mouse to attract more art students? We all love Bugs Bunny and Mickey Mouse, but not on the Mona Lisa. Put it someplace else. Never will that, what's going to be next? Beware. I understand that with all due respect to the East LA College, my alma mater many, many years ago, is supporting the idea of installing another recent statue in our Cascade Waterfalls to entice students to take more art classes. I love art, but not at whose expense. I'm asking that. If that is true, then why not place the new statue in front of the Vincent Price Art Building or place it in front of the college or in the median of a street that is the main entrance to the city? We thank you for not allowing the removal of the Athena as originally asked, and we're now sincerely asking, do not allow the installation of any other statue, even temporary, in our Cascade Park. The waterfall surrounding area was and is the origin of Monterey Park. Do not allow the modifications, which can later be used as a stepping stone to something more devastating in the future, maybe a hotel. As a retired U.S. Marine Corps officer, I share with you some military strategy. Communist and fascist strategy is to get their foot in the door now with what may seem like a minor change to help people, and then comes a real intent, a major change which is to destroy history, pride, and harmony. He who ignores history is doomed to make the same mistakes again. Please stop the ball from rolling into the Cascades. Do not allow any change to our Cascade Waterfall, whether it's modifications, additions, or deletions, even if it's temporary. I wonder how many of these East LA students are registered to vote? The present statue may not represent the ancient statue, but that's what was placed there originally. So I ask you, please do not approve this, and thank you very, very much, and congratulations for your retirement.
Natalie James, be followed by Jim Iwaki.
Hi. Hey, Peter. Hi, everyone. All right, hold on. My name is Natalie James, and I represent the fourth generation of my family living in the San Gabriel Valley. I grew up in both San Gabriel and Alhambra and spent a lot of time in Monterey Park, another beautiful city in the SGV. I attended San Gabriel High School, as did my sisters, my mother, and my grandmother. I share all of this information with you so you can understand my roots in this community and how important it is to me. I furthered my studies at UCLA, where I earned my undergrad in Women's Studies with an emphasis in arts, media, and culture. Art has always been a passion of mine, and that's why I feel very privileged speaking with you today. Tonight, I'm here to express my enthusiasm for the Equitable Vitreins' public art project in Heritage Falls Park, which we called the Cascades or Cascades growing up. When I first heard of this project, I immediately thought how cool it was. After sharing this proposal with my family, they reminded me of the times that we visited as it was crucial to my parents as a youth. We experienced interesting places, helping give us a more developed worldview. I was disappointed when I watched the past city council meeting and witnessed person after person walk up and express such strong opposition to this temporary art piece. Having grown up in the SGV, I am sad to share with you I had very little exposure to art, both in my community and in the Alhambra School District. Arts and culture were never a priority and rarely were they encouraged. When examining this project, it was clear that the statue known as Eve will garner well-deserved attention for such a beautiful and historical site. If this temporary art piece can get people interested in art and the stories behind it, I think it's something I'd stand by 100%, especially when it comes to our youth. I understand Monterey Park's slogan is pride in the past, faith in the future. I personally have faith that if we continue to expand our worldviews, our future could only be brighter. This statue, a representation of an Asian woman, seems like quite the beautiful nod to a large percentage of the community in Monterey Park. As a Mexican-American woman, I love seeing diversity in art and representation above all, whether it's my culture or someone else's. The more inclusion we have, the better we are. Lastly, in nearly every testimony I heard, everyone expressed not to touch the current Athena. Having studied under one of the foremost scholars and Greek goddesses at UCLA, the moment I looked at the statue, I knew immediately it wasn't Athena. She has no spear, she has no helmet, and instead, it is the Roman goddess Flora who has a floral band wrapped around her waist. This statue, for anyone who has seen it, you can just hit Google.com on your phone right now and see the statue people are crying over isn't even Athena. I understand how important public parks and spaces are for our diverse communities when hearing the opposition was clear the kind of racial tensions that exist in the SGV, which I've been witness to. I'm here today to say that there are many other people like myself-
Excuse me, ma'am, you have three minutes.
Okay. In their teens, 20s, and 30s and beyond that think this is cool and fresh, I think it's a great idea and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Iwaki, be followed by Stevie Weinstein.
Okay, Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm the Treasurer of the Historical Society and a longtime resident. On behalf of the Historical Society, we oppose the proposal of Equitable Vitreins. Also, Charles Carter, former Historical Society President, who is no longer with us, we believe, who acquired the current statue, we believe would not appreciate the changes proposed to the Cascade Falls. We would propose another location at Garvey Ranch Park near the museum. This could increase attendance at the museum, which is lacking at the present time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, residents, and staff. I'm here to read a letter by Alexander Keith. He's an art critic and writer in Claremont, California. To the Monterey Park City Council, I am writing to express my strong support for Equitable Vitreins' proposal for the temporary installation of a sculpture by artist Zhu Wang in the Cascade's Fountain at Heritage Falls Park. As an art critic and regular contributor of reviews and writing to Art Forum and other outlets, it is my job to know what is going on in contemporary art in the Los Angeles area. Equitable Vitreins stands out among a very crowded field, both in terms of consistent conceptual clarity and rigor, as well as in more mundane, practical ways. Their shows are immaculately installed, for example, whether in the building, which gave the group its name, or elsewhere. In terms of public programming, their track record demonstrates an ability to draw in diverse audiences and speak to them, to create situations that foster a sense of inclusion, engagement, and involvement. engagement, and involvement. The proposed intervention is an excellent example of what I have come to expect from the Equitable Vitreins Collaborative. At once aesthetically and conceptually sophisticated, but not at all elitist or exclusive, both subtly provocative and yet completely accessible to non-art audiences of all ages, not to mention the inevitable, hungry parade of art lovers and EV admirers eager for a good excuse to visit your historic city. Will it attract press? Here I speak with a special authority. The answer is yes, of course it will. It has already attracted my attention and that of my colleagues in Los Angeles. We all earnestly hope to have the chance to write about it. Once we have done so, even more famished visitors will arrive, yelp in hand. As for the specifics of the project, I have looked over the revised proposal and find it excellent, compelling, and incredibly timely. The plinth arrangement outlined in the plan seems a perfect solution for installing the temporary sculpture, safe, secure, and leaving no footprint or trace. The only footprints or traces will be left on the minds and in the hearts of visitors to the park. Note that while the concept is deeply engaged with local histories, it is not didactic. It doesn't demand a specific response, nor is it explicitly political. It is far subtler than that, raising important questions about race, gender, and social change without shouting out the answers immediately afterwards, or worse still, beforehand. In fact, it doesn't shout at all. Instead, the project suggests that public spaces like Heritage Park can become critical sites for conversation and community building, as well as reflection, beauty, and self-awareness. All it takes is a catalyst. I applaud and support Equitable Vitreins' efforts. Sincerely, Alexander Keith, critic and writer. Thank you."
Phil Zeiger. He'll be followed by Hannah Khan.
Mayor, members of the City Council, I want to thank you for inviting me here tonight. As I think about this project, I think about the person that created the Cascades. Was this his vision to put a statue in the waterfall? I don't know. Would he approve of it? That's hard to say. As I look at it, it's like white tamper with perfection. I think we should leave it the way it is. I don't see Peter Snyder's vision in the statue. That's why I'm against it. Thank you.
Ms. Khan will be followed by Seal Yoon Son.
Hi. My name is Hannah Khan, and I'm excited to have the opportunity to address the City Council and the residents of Monterey Park. Before I begin, I'll give you a little bit of background on myself, just to give you some context. I'm currently the Assistant to the Chief Curator at the Museum of Contemporary Art in Los Angeles. Since working there, I've worked intimately with her on everything that's day-to-day, as well as with the Curatorial Department in general as their department coordinator and a curatorial assistant on seven different exhibitions since I've started. It is as a member of the contemporary arts community and a lifelong Angelino, four or five generations deep, that I come to you this evening to speak on behalf of Moca's Director of Education and Public Programs, Amanda Hunt, who is unable to join us this evening, but has penned a letter of support for this project, which I will read. "To the Honorable Mayor Teresa Real Sebastian and the Monterey Park City Council, I'm writing to encourage the City Council of Monterey Park to vote in favor of Equitable Vitreins' proposal to install public art at the fountain at Heritage Falls Park. Before being hired at Los Angeles' Museum of Contemporary Art, where I currently work as the Director of Education and Public Programs, I served as the Associate Curator at the Studio Museum in Harlem in New York. During my tenure at the Studio Museum, I worked in partnership with the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation, along with the Marcus Garvey Park Alliance to curate In Harlem, Kevin Beasley, Simone Lee, Cori Newkirk, and Rudy Shepherd, an exhibition of site-specific commissioned public works made by contemporary artists at each of the four historic Harlem parks. The works will remain on view through July 25 and have been a meaningful addition to each of their sites. Social media and personal correspondences have proven their continued impact. Having organized and produced the initial phases of In Harlem, I feel suited to speak to the benefits of public artworks as a potential site for meaningful conversation surrounding contemporary art, culture, and pertinent social issues. It is the work I began doing during my first tenure as curator at LAX Art in Los Angeles, and it is work that I plan to continue well into my future here in Los Angeles. As the Director of Education and Public Programs at Moca, it is my responsibility to speak knowledgeably and authoritatively of the value of artworks, both within and outside the museum. When I learned of Equitable Vitreins' proposal to install Zhu Wang's Eve in the fountain at Monterey Park's Heritage Falls Park, I was thrilled. This project would situate a museum-quality work in a context that is rich, not just aesthetically, but culturally and symbolically. By placing Eve in proximity to the existing Athena statue, which was sourced in 2005 from the same region in China, Equitable Vitreins is inviting visitors to think past tried ideas of authenticity in order to more deeply consider the unique virtues and complex histories of Monterey Park. I anticipate that Equitable Vitreins' programmatic collaboration with Monterey Park's own Vincent Price Art Museum will only further serve the surrounding public in order to expand the impact of this project. Thank you."
Speaker after will be Kat Wang... Kat Yang, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Monterey Park City Council. My name is Soo Yoon, and I'm not a resident of Monterey Park. I actually live and work in Los Angeles, and I'm here to speak in behalf of Tara Krajnack, who's Assistant Professor at Pittsor College. "To the Monterey Park City Council, I am writing to express my enthusiastic support for Equitable Vitreins' proposed installation of a temporary sculpture by the artist Zhu Wang at Heritage Falls Park. As a professor in the field of studio art at Pittsor College, this is the kind of project that I want my students to be exposed to and learn from. If this project should go forward, I would make it the focus for an assignment on public art and require my students to visit and respond to the installation, and I imagine many of my colleagues teaching art at neighboring institutions would do much the same. But perhaps more importantly, this is precisely the kind of project that I want my future students to have already seen when they step into my darkroom as freshmen. Let me explain. As a professor at Pittsor, I've had the opportunity to work with students from all seven of the Claremont Consortium's institutions, among them, a number of first-generation students from the San Gabriel Valley and Inland Empire. The proposed installation represents an opportunity to bring art to a wide, diverse community that includes, yes, the students of the future. I myself was a first-generation college freshman once upon a time, raised in a vanilla suburb of Cleveland that was as empty of art as the walls of our blue-collar home. I would have benefited enormously from encountering a project like the one proposed. An installation and intervention like this expands a young person's understanding of art, community, and the relationship between the two. It stimulates critical thinking and dialogue, and makes teaching easier and more fun. One of the things that I most appreciate and want to emphasize about this project is the way it keeps the public, part of public art, front and center. A successful public art project needn't be about creating a permanent treasure or object. Sometimes, it is best understood as designing a space for interaction or a temporary site for the creation of new community and conversation about issues of shared importance: history, family, and what makes a place home. I am well acquainted with the previous work of Equitable Vitreins. They have earned a reputation of excellent, thoughtful curation that introduces art into unlikely places and before unlikely sets of eyes. I can't think of a more important and worthy mission, and I strongly support this proposal. Sincerely, Tara Krajnack." And before I step off, since I have a little bit of time, I'd like to make a remark. As an artist and educator myself, I see the important value of hosting accessible forums of art that will become a site of contemplation and discussion here at Monterey Park. I'd like to remind everyone that public art is a reflection of its time as an indication of the city's progress, accomplishment, and rich cultural heritage over the years. Although Zhu Wang's Eve will be temporary, and here I stress the word "temporary," the discussions around labor, representation, and identity will inevitably become part of the public history and evolving culture here in Monterey Park. I hope the City Council will take this into consideration and back this important project. Thank you."
Next speaker is Kat Yang, followed by Justin Kim.
Hello. I'm reading on behalf of Christine Waikim, Associate Curator of Contemporary Art at LACMA. But before I read this letter of support, I do want to add that as an Asian-American and as an Asian-American woman, I always look for representation of my face and my identity in art and media around me. And that drove me to organize a group called Asian Mamas Working in the Arts to address the under-representation of Asian women, specifically Asian-American women in Los Angeles in arts, but not just in museums, but also in public spaces. So now we have the opportunity to see ourselves symbolized and embodied in public space. As you can see, Echo Rule Vitreins' friends, who've come to support this item today, we are energized by the consideration by this council to push forth dialogue centered around our representation via this Eve statue on a site for contemplation and for community bridging our past and our future. Now I'm going to read the letter. "I am writing for my position as Associate Curator of Contemporary Art at the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, LACMA, to recommend that the Monterey Park City Council vote to approve Equitable Vitreins' proposal for the installation of Zhu Wang's sculpture Eve in the fountain at Heritage Falls Park. Equitable Vitreins' EV is a young and promising nonprofit organization representing a model heretofore unexplored in this region. Their projects are formed around specific sites with primary consideration given to the audiences in closest proximity to where the work will be installed. EV considers the work it does with local populations and the governing bodies that serve as prospective hosts for the projects as part of the artistic process. By bringing art into unexpected places and initiating conversations about the importance and meaning of art in forms where such issues are rarely considered, EV provides a valuable educational service to L.A. County. I watch as Equitable Vitreins develop their approach through two years of impressive programming in the lobby of Los Angeles' Equitable Life Building, and I'm thrilled that they have decided to expand their operation into the municipal realm. As a curator and a museum professional who has been working in the field for over a decade, I can assure the council that the project's concept is sound and the educational and artistic benefit to the city of Monterey Park and its residents is undeniable. Ellie Lee, the Director of Equitable Vitreins, has been in conversation with LACMA's very own Community Engagement Manager, Marvella Murrow, whom is currently engaged in off-site programming at the Vincent Price Art Museum and the Bruegemeier Library. It is clear that Equitable Vitreins is very serious about organizing events that will be relevant and appealing to Monterey Park's residents. If the Monterey Park City Council has the foresight to approve Equitable Vitreins' proposal, I'm confident that they will be rewarded with a meaningful and professionally managed project that engages with and energizes the city's residents. While drawing a significant number of visitors from throughout L.A. County and beyond...
The red light is blinking.
From my perspective, the city of Monterey Park should be thrilled to have the opportunity to be infested with what I imagine to be a long line of successful public art projects initiated by Equitable Vitreins. Sincerely, Christine Waikim." Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I'm going to ask that instead of a like, can we please get a timer with a beeper? I think that'll be more effective. Thank you. Please call the next speaker.
Justin Kim. And she'll be followed by Carol Chen.
My name is Diane Garcia. Thank you for having me here today. I'm here to support Equitable Vitreins. I am a public librarian in the northern part of San Gabriel Valley. Before that, I was a teaching assistant in Monterey Park, well, for Garvey School District for seven years while I was getting my bachelor's and master's. Both my parents are also postal carriers, the Monterey Park Post Office. I have family that has worked within the city and lived within the city for decades, and so I visit the area a lot. So the reason Equitable Vitreins' project really spoke to me was because, working with children for the past 10 years, representation really matters. And providing this Eve sculpture in a public space would allow children from all walks of life to see a different type of person depicted in art that doesn't look like the European standard that we've become used to. Let's see. It's especially important in times like these where it matters, people and children are often realize that they're looked at because of the way that they look. And to see a public representation of their family could provide a profound sense of validity and a subtle cue that their experience matters and their family history matters and their inclusion into the community is real. As a public librarian, I also know how important it is to provide... to go out in the community and engage with the community. You can't just do that in a museum. You really have to be out in the community to get people that maybe weren't aware of their love of art to understand what art can do for them. Let's see. "I urge the Monterey Park City Council to provide a safe space for all members of the community to reflect and participate in civic life in the San Gabriel Valley and approve Zhu Wang's Eve sculpture for temporary placement at Heritage Falls Park." Thank you.
The speaker after will be Thomas Wong.
Hi, members of the council. My name is Carol Che. I am a first-generation Chinese-American. I was born in Hawaii, and both my parents immigrated from the Republic of China. I currently live in Limerick Park, but I am primarily standing here before you today as an arts journalist who's covered the Los Angeles art scene for the last eight years. I've written for many publications about a wide range of artworks, including some public art. I want to vouch for the integrity of Equitable Vitreins and their proposed project. I believe it presents a means of thoughtful engagement with the public at what is obviously a beloved municipal site. Contrary to previous comments that were made here, I don't believe that the aim is to turn it into a tourist attraction. Quite the opposite. I believe they want to engage local residents and schoolchildren primarily, in other words, to people who generally are going to be more likely to spend time at the site. They will not be destroying or tampering with the original artwork. They've listened to input, and they've been very careful about reviewing technical requirements and making sure that the intrusion will be minimal. So I highly recommend approval of this proposal. Also, in general, I just want to say, I personally have become more and more invested and interested in public art in recent years. Art in the private sector has become increasingly commodified to a fairly extreme degree. Art is now recognized as an asset class by the financial sector, making it less and less accessible to ordinary people who are not in the 1%. And I probably don't need to mention that the NEA is about to be completely destroyed, and we are facing an administration that is adamantly anti-art. During these times, we need to support more public art, and especially projects like this that are so thoughtful and so responsible and careful in all the details of their proposal. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'd like to add my voice in support of this project. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Monterey Park, born here at Garfield Medical Center, went to St. Stevens. My parents still live here, I still live here, and I love the city of Monterey Park and all that it has to offer. When I was approached about supporting this specific project, the moment it clicked for me was when they explained kind of this new iteration of the proposal, and I thought, what a great metaphor this would be, this project would be for our city, for the existing Athena statue, to welcome this new statue, born of China, born of the same area, out of the same rock, here, being welcomed into a park that's existing, that has existed and has a history here, but being welcomed into the city, much like my own family, and I think many families that are here in this room, including those on the City Council, who sound as if been welcomed here to the city and to the San Gabriel Valley. City Council, who sound as if been welcomed here to the city and to the San Gabriel Valley. A great metaphor this piece of art would be. So I hope and encourage the City Council to support this. It's paid for. The technical aspects that have already been talked to, in terms of disturbing its historical status are, I think, mostly baseless and groundless. And I hope that the council will take into consideration the fact that this will be a temporary installation that will send a great message. And I think just in our conversation, clearly, this, this piece of art has spurred thought and conversation already. I know it will continue to do so if it moves forward and if it is approved here tonight. And I hope it will join other works of art that we have, as a city, embraced over the years, including the painting of our utility boxes to beautify our city, the beautification of our parks, the artwork that hangs above the entrance to Bruegemeier Memorial Library, and many other pieces of art that have been installed temporarily here in the city, including the piano that was part of the, the art project in Atlantic Times Square a few years ago. And including Heritage Falls Park at the Cascades, the installation of the new lights that have been helping to bring more attention and more discussion about public art and art in public spaces here in our city and our community. And I hope that we will continue to do that and the city will continue to embrace more of these kinds of projects. Thank you.
Okay, Larry Sullivan.
In May of 1981, a 21-year-old Yale student named Maya Lin would learn that she had won the design competition for the Vietnam Veterans Memorial to be built on National Mall in Washington DC. The contest attracted over 1,400 entries, all judged anonymously. And despite only earning a B in her class for this very same design, it had been selected by a panel of eight judges. Inevitably, Maya's design would be met with resistance. Many opposed it, unhappy that the monument only put an emphasis on the fallen and ignored the living veterans. Many questioned the sinking design, preferring to see it rise above the ground. Tom Cathcart, a civilian lawyer at the Pentagon and Vietnam veteran, wrote a scathing op-ed published in the New York Times expressing his disappointment, comparing the monument to a tomb and concerned that it will only drum up the controversy surrounding the war, further shaming those who fought in it. He described it as anti-heroic and a black hole. Maya Lin had a different interpretation. She would write, "I imagine taking a knife and cutting into the earth, opening it up an initial, an initial violence and pain that in time would heal." Her words would prove prophetic. The fears of those who opposed the war would not come to fruition. Today, the memorial service serves as a pilgrimage site for all Americans. It has become a sacred place of healing, reflection, and reverence. Regardless of anyone's position, Maya Lin's design sparked the conversation. It afforded nuance within a highly polarizing issue. It allowed us to be able to be critical of our political leaders' decisions to enter military conflict and simultaneously honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice and who are presently serving in our military. And ironically, today it serves as a bridge for those divided by the controversy. Now, it would be irresponsible for me to make an equivalent comparison of Vietnam Memorial with the proposed Statue of Eve. However, I bring up the Vietnam Memorial to highlight the role of art in challenging our way of thinking. I would like to highlight the role of art in provoking necessary social and political discourse. I would like to highlight the role of art in pushing our society forward as it adapts to the inevitability of cultural change and evolution. And I would like to highlight that truly meaningful art is provocative, allowing us to safely step out of our comfortable worldviews to consider other possibilities and forces us to act courageously in the name of progress. That is why I'm pleased that the project directors, as a Monterey Park resident, after listening to the concerns of many citizens, had the wisdom to modify their proposal and have Eve sit juxtaposed to Athena. How powerful is it for our youth who visit the Cascades to experience the two pieces of work simultaneously honoring where we were and where we are headed? How powerful is it for our youth to ask these questions for themselves as they develop into engaged civic-minded adults? From a teacher's perspective, there is no greater joy than a child in my class curious about the world they live in. There is no greater joy in a child asking the essential questions that signify their wholehearted engagement and beginning understandings of the role they play in the greater society. As a teacher, it is my job to make sure my class is structured in a way that ensures such provocations. As a resident of Monterey Park, I view this as a similar vehicle and an opportunity to invest in our youth. I hope you can see that potential as well. Thank you all.
Where was that timer all this time?
Okay, Larry Sullivan, who will be followed by Rong Wan Liu.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. I think I have a quick solution so we can do a quick vote and get this thing over with. How about we construct a statue of Dan Coste and put it on the waterfalls? Can we call for the vote? From the get-go, this thing has been handled very badly, very poorly. The Park and Recs Commission took it upon themselves to make a major change in the part of the city that impacts the people and the history of this community. The historical community, historic society, was not given the opportunity. Granted, somebody met, somebody from historic society up by the waterfalls, had a discussion about this. Why wasn't a presentation done to historic society since this thing is so important to us and it's been here for such a long time? The other part to it is that if the Park and Recs has given this ability, what other ability are they going to step over to the next time in some other park? Who's not going to come along and want to do something different? We just need to get our ducks in a row on this whole issue and decide how the system works internally in the city when issues are brought before the city or before these commissions. I think that's a very important fact on this thing. The other is that everybody talks about putting this statue here and bringing kids. Well, for those of you that have been there, understand, this is not flatlands. This is a hillside. Those steps are very long and going up there. I have seen the Parks guys chase kids off the hillside when they start rolling down the hillside because they're afraid they're going to roll into the, into the waterfalls. So it's not something where you conducively can take kids and run them up the hillside because their minds are going to go someplace else. They're going to want to just roll down the hill. So the city has to look at this thing in that kind of a picture. Another part to the equation that's missing out of this whole thing is, where's the plan? Where's a marketing plan that this is going to be an outreach to the community? We have one newspaper in town who just came out today with an article the day of the presentation. How are the residents of this community advised of what's going on? Now, we heard today that the, the Park and Recs said, well, they're going to reach out to the people around the neighborhood. It never happened. It didn't happen. So how are we telling people what's going on? How are we going to broadcast this to the community? How are we going to get people behind this? You got to put it in front of them in this community. We don't have the newspapers or vehicles to reach out to people. You got to make them see it. My suggestion? Put it in City Hall. You got traffic coming daily inside City Hall. Put it inside a City Hall, put it outside a City Hall. Look at the people exercise every morning outside of this City Hall. Look at the impact that we would have there. Where over on the area of where we are now on the Cascades, we just don't have that visibility. I think if we're going to do anything, I think we got to do it. I think we got to do it. I'm not against art, but I think we got to move it into the environment where people are going to see it. We got to move it inside City Hall, we got to put it outside City Hall, and that's the statement about Monterey Park. Not way the heck on the other side of town, but right there in front of City Hall. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Robert Rong Wan Liu. I do not live in Monterey Park, but I'm a East Los Angeles College tenured professor. I come to support the installation of the statue. The reason is that I congratulate every effort from the Parks and Recreation Commission's effort to make the park more beautiful and more attractive. It is beautiful and attractive and meaningful, but it's better to have a more beautiful place and more meaningful place to reflect the demographics in Monterey Park. And the statue of an Asian-American lady over there represents the heritage and also the demographics here in Monterey Park. About 20 years ago, I immigrated to America and I got my first job in Monterey Park, just a company next to the waterfall. So every day I walked up and down the steps, listening to the beautiful sound of the water, viewing the beautiful grassland. I feel so gratitude to be here because America is a country where every people, every person, all the people from the, all over the world can enjoy the freedom, can appreciate the cultural diversity. And we know that the project will definitely provide a very good opportunity to educate the public so the public could have a better opportunity to get to know the art, to appreciate the art. And I strongly support this program over there. And maybe you ask, oh, if you like it, you can move it into your backyard or front yard. Even though I could afford it, I don't think the artist or the equitable Vatun could agree because the purpose of this statue is to educate the public and not for my family. Okay? And also, the diversity here, it's because the statue represents the diversity. Even though maybe we have different opinions about the statue, but this is a very good opportunity for people to have a dialogue, to discuss the art, to discuss different ideas. And I do wish that the statue will become a bridge between people from different cultures and not a barrier. Thank you.
Delario Robinson.
Hello, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. I'm Delario Robinson. I'm your Planning Commissioner, former Economic Development Commissioner, Art and Culture Commissioner. Also served as President of the Monterey Park Democratic Club. Also served as President of the United Democratic Club of Monterey Park. In Los Angeles, I served as President of the Los Angeles Council of Churches, as well as Community Issues Chair. I'm here to tell you that I, I stand against having a statue put here in Monterey Park. When I look at who has gotten up and spoken, most of the younger people have come and spoke out in favor of putting a statue there. However, myself, being a family person, even a senior citizen, most of the citizens here in Monterey Park are senior citizens. And over the years, I've gotten a little bit more conservative. Well, a lady with, called Eve, with a fig leaf over her private parts, I think that's a concern of mine. Breasts being shown. Even in my home, I have at least 200 pieces of art, none of them in the nude variety. So I'm asking, we think, we thank Equitable, Equitable Vitreens for their generosity, but we should also graciously bow out of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank all the speakers for coming up. With that, Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor Pro Tem Lam.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for giving me the first opportunity to speak today. As I noticed that it is an agenda that people are so concerned about it. First of all, I'd like to thank residents and visitors to the city of Monterey Park to express their opinion. First of all, I'd like to thank the US Constitution we made to allow and protect everyone have an equal right and freedom of speech so that we enjoy the freedom of speech tonight. Some of the country, they don't have the same status we have, so we should appreciate for that. Now, as an elected official here, I wanted to let you know that we are elected by the people of the city, of the residents living in the city. We make decisions on behalf of the residents. Now, I noticed that not many of you are from the city of Monterey Park, mostly from San Gabriel Valley or other cities. And we have few dozen of residents shows up and expressed their against opinion to your Some reasoning you heard earlier that you'll cause nuisance, safety issues, or just can't accept another statue in the water, they don't give enough reason sometime, but they express their against the Eve. Now, I want to use examples usually to convince people, as usual. You all know that I like to use some of the good examples. Now, if you travel to New York, you notice that we have Liberty of Statue received from good friend of the French people many years ago. At that time, at the point of that history, we accepted and then it made it a sightseeing point and it did attract a lot of tourists and become a landmark of the United States. Now, if you have the Eve, you want to add Eve to a statue of Liberty, it will be very hard because you have to get approval by maybe the city of, a resident of New York or the whole entire state. Not because they're against your Eve, but if you try to replace a founder of the historic site, it's very difficult. Now, here, in the city of Monterey Park, we have Adina. It's a founder of Monterey Park. You try to replace her, it's very difficult. Same reason. Now, if you want to add another statue next to Adina, Adina, do I pronounce right? Now, you heard the reasoning above, all the people coming here, they are longtime residents oppose your proposal. I hate to turn down things usually, but I have to if I need to. So also, I give you another example. If you go to Washington DC, there's our founding father of George Washington. You say, can I remove George Washington for two years? Let my Eve be there in the same spot for two years? They probably say no. Same reason. And then you turn around to look at the statue of Lincoln, President Lincoln, say, oh, Lincoln looks not that good to me. I want to put Eve there, maybe it looks better. The people in the US would say no. So I'm trying to give you three examples why people are not accepting your idea. Because something that they expressed earlier, I don't want to repeat, it's almost like a founder of Monterey Park. It's on the logo, on the badge logo. Not a dot or comma or period allowed to be added to that historic site, what I heard. So please, take my words and consider to think other places to place Eve. And it will be very hard for you to replace George Washington, Lincoln, or Liberty of Statue, Statue in New York. And for those reasons, I know you have young people, you have your thought, you wanted to challenge. I, I support your ideas, you know, just probably have to think another place because we are elected by them. If none of us... If none of us, if we support you, none of us will be elected again next term. Understand? So, so I'm telling you that I can't vote for city of Alhambra, I can't vote for city of San Gabriel, I have to vote for the resident of Monterey Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I, you know, I was going to ask my other colleague to speak, but I asked our city attorney if I can speak next, and he said, yeah, it's up to you. So I'm going to take the liberty of speaking next, because you took what I was, in part, what I was going to say. And the reason being is, is I was, you know, you all were speaking, and I was going through these letters, and I don't know if Henry is still here, Henry Lo, but one, in his letter, he put, "The Cascades has also been witnessed to our city as a place where generations of newcomers from throughout the United States and around the world have arrived in Monterey Park to call it their home." And, you know, when I came in, I mean, I could see where both sides were coming from, because my husband and I were huge, huge advocates of art. And there was a gentleman, Danny, and I wrote down what he said. He said, "Art provokes discussion." And when I look at an art piece, I don't look at it to see if it's Latina like me, or to see if she's African American, or is it a male, is it a female, is she Chinese, is she Japanese, is she my age or not? To me, when I look at an art piece, it's symbolic, you know? I'm not looking to identify myself physically, does she look like me? To me, art should be something that everybody can look at and you identify with it in some fashion, way or form. You might have, you might be somehow inspired by the way it moves you, or the lighting, or the story behind the sculpture, or the painting, or the artist, or whatever it may be. But for me, art, and I don't, it might sound silly, but art is faceless. It is, because art is art. And every person, and I'm going to challenge each one of you, to go upstairs to our second floor, right outside of the city manager's office, because there is a piece of art there. And it's a black and white mural, and it's kind of an abstract, and it's stunning. I believe Hansi brought that in, yourself and your wife did?
Actually, I didn't, I didn't bring it in personally, but I hosted a, a group of artists, renowned artists that were here from, I forgot the exact place in China, but they actually painted that painting here.
Well, thank you. Because if you look at that piece of art, I didn't know who the artist was, I didn't know where it came from, I didn't know what their inspiration was, but I saw it, and it moved me, and it captured me. And I was standing there with a staff member, and I asked her, and I said, you know, what do you see in there? And she said, oh, I see mountains. And I said, that's interesting. I said, I see water. And it's an abstract, it's black and white, but it, you stop, and you look at it, and it moves you, and that's what art is. So art doesn't have color, art doesn't have face, art doesn't have an ethnicity. Art has a movement. Art will inspire people to think, to feel, to inquire. That's what art does. So for those of you that came up and said, I want something that looks like me, you're missing the picture. You're missing the picture. Okay? Art moves people, that's what it does. And when I was researching about our Athena, our Athena to me is, she's my Statue of Liberty. You know, she's a reason, you know, why we came, that's what she symbolizes to me. It's the freedom, it's the diversity. And I always say, we have the Cascades, because the Cascades is flowing water. And one drop of water is nothing, you just have a drop of water, right? But if you get a bunch of drop of waters, now you have the Cascades, and that's what Monterey Park is. Each one of us is a drop of water. By ourselves, we're just a drop of water, but when we put us all together, we're this magnificent Cascades. And so that's why, you know, I, I know you came to my walk with the mayor, and I told you, I can't discuss this, this is on the agenda. But when you go to the cities, you really have to understand what these areas mean to people. And this is something that is ingrained in me. And no matter where, I mean, I predict I will live in Monterey Park throughout the rest of my life, but wherever I may be, you know, Monterey Park is home, and when I see that Cascades, that's home. And I know Dan probably feels the same way, he doesn't live in our city, but for him, that Cascades is home, and that's something that we protect. And as much as I appreciate, and thank you so much for thinking of Monterey Park, and I also want to thank our Park and Recs Commission for sending this to the council, because this provided us with a discussion about art. But I don't think that the Cascades is the right place. And there are many other places, you know, whether it be City Hall. I think it would be great if you were to put it outside of the museum, Monterey Park Museum, Historical Society, I think that would be great. I want to ask you, how many of you here have been to our historical museum? Oh, that's a pity. You need to go there. Because that is, that's our past, that's our present, and that will be our future. And just, there was a comment by one of the speakers here, the Historical Society of Monterey Park is not part of Monterey Park, they are nonprofit that rent space from Monterey Park. So we are not under obligation to notify them when we're taking actions. We may do it as a courtesy, but it's not an obligation, they're a nonprofit, and they're great about what they do. But I think that would be a great place, because if you're talking about bringing in the kids, put the music, put the piece there. Put this beautiful piece there, and it'll intrigue them, it'll stir conversation, and then they can go into the museum. And I'm really glad when I received Pilar Tompkins' letter, that it's going to be at VPAM. Mr. City Manager, please, if we can coordinate with the Vincent Price Art Museum, which is not part of Monterey Park, somebody said Monterey Park's VPAM, it is located in our city, but it's part of East L.A. College. But I want to make sure that when that is being hosted at the VPAM, that that information is posted on our website, it's posted on our city cable channel, and if possible, and if we have enough time, it's also posted on the Cascades, because that's something that everybody should visit, not only for this beautiful structure, but, or statue, but for all the other art pieces that are there. Let me make sure I got all my notes. But again, I want to thank all of you for coming up, and one other item, and I know Mr. Coste, you're on your way out, but I really want our city to look at a plan for bringing in art. At one point, I was pitching to bring, you know, art to the park type thing, and concerts in the city, Shakespeare in the Park type thing, because you're right, it is missing. And this administration doesn't see art, doesn't see the value of art, and I think it's really important that we preserve it, because it is part of our heritage. And I'm sorry, but it exercises another part of the brain. And so I think it's really important that we preserve it. So, Mr. City Manager, I'd like for staff to please implement an art program for the city, and we have a bunch of medians here where we can showcase art. I'm all for that. We have various other parks, I know that there are pocket areas, I don't know if you've been to Pasadena, but Pasadena will have art pieces, and they're not prominently located in a park, but they're located in medians, so that when, you know, you're walking by or you're driving bike on Okinawan Lake, you see this, this art piece, and you start talking about it. And I wish Monterey Park would have something like that. So I do want to thank our Park and Recs Commissioners for putting this in front of the Monterey Park City Council, because if anything, it got us talking. And that's what art is supposed to do, it's supposed to promote and provoke discussion, and that's exactly what we're doing tonight. So I, again, I really want to thank you, and I'm going to ask, direct you to go to staff, and possibly, I think we have a person here from the Historical Museum. I think, personally, I think that would be a great place to put it. There's a gentleman here from the Monterey Park Golf Course that supported it, I think that would be another great place. If you visited our Monterey Park Golf Course, it's stunning, so why not put art there? Bring in more people, let's, let's do some synergy here. So again, I want to thank you, I want to thank all the speakers, and for all you young speakers, don't lose your zest, keep talking, keep speaking, keep, keep, you know, advocating for what you believe in. I was really inspired for, by all of you that came out and spoke, because I wish more youngsters from Monterey Park would also come up and speak. So I really applaud you for doing that. So again, thank you to the speakers. And with that, I will pass on to Councilmember Peter Chan.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to take the politics out of this, because Hans and I both are, will be term out, so we don't need extra votes or anything four years from now. So I want to take the politics out. I want to take the racial issues out, regardless of, you know, who the artist make this, I want to take it out. I want to take the history out too. I just want to look at this as an art. And I want to use simple common sense to analyze this situation. And first of all, I want to, before I go into those simple reasonings, I want to thank all the speakers coming tonight, I hear you, and all the reasons for that, I agree with, I agree with all of you. Every person makes sense, has the reasons behind it, so I just want to take all the other elements out, and want to have some simple analysis on it. And just like we move around all the time, I move around in the city of Monterey Park for the last thirty something years, whenever I go to a new place, when I move to a new house, I always wants to be, to be nice and know my neighbors, and be nice to them, be... So usually, I maybe buy some cake, maybe buy some, make some cookies, my wife do that, not me, and, and just to know them, shake hands, present myself, hey, I'm Peter, and I'm your new neighbor, and, you know, you know, just, just be nice to them. And I think that's the way to do. And in this case, is that Eve is a new person, and come, and in her last few meetings ago, and I would, I really don't like the idea to displace the existing statue. So it was before, that was before, to start with. So that is not good, because to be a good neighbor, you don't displace people, you work with them, you try to be nice to each other, to coexist with each other, instead of, you know, displace someone, or I take your place, that kind of things. So that is not good. Now, of course, now you change the, the idea to put it in the middle of the Cascades. Now, as for good-looking or bad-looking, or that depends on people's ideas, because art has no right or wrong. Someone sees it nice, but someone will see it not as nice. That is art. Art is something is from you, yourself, and from the artist. The artist may create some ideas, have some meanings behind it, but it depends on the person who sees the art may not be the same as the artist's intention, but you may, the person who sees each picture, or sculpture, or any piece of form of art, or even music, song, people have different interpretations, different ideas. So good or bad, I don't care. I know, it is, is up for people. Everyone has, will be good and bad, so I'm not taking out. But I have one biggest question, is why? Why there? Why? This Monterey Park is seven point eight square miles big, but why has to be in that particular spot? So I, I really don't know why. And is it a good place or bad place? I don't know, because I'm not as artistic, and I just want to use simple reasoning. And so why, it's been there for so many years, so why we suddenly put another statue there? Is it possible to put in someplace else? To, because I see, hear all the speakers talk about, is to add to the building, to awareness of art, to add to this, to the community, to improve the community. So those are all good, good stuff that I like, that I, that I want to. But there's so many places in Monterey Park, there's no need to be there. And unless there's some specific questions, reasons, it has to be there, but not somewhere else. That I don't know, I still have to hear from, from whoever that will come up with that. But without knowing that, even if there's a good reason for that, artistic history or whatever, there's so many places in the city. Why there? I still don't, don't understand. So, but can we, at least for the good of this, for the city, add to the building, add to the art, give awareness to the, to the people to, to know more about art? Why don't we create, just like the other, you know, mayor and vice mayor said, create a district, create an area that's to, for the reason to promote art, or any form, sculptures, paintings, or anything? We can do that. We have enough areas to do that. The Historical Society, the parks, outside city or inside city, or museums, all are good places. So, so at this time, I can say, I do not support the idea of putting Eve on Cascades, but I support the idea of creating art, increase their awareness, but put it in a appropriate place. Thank you.
Councilmember Liang.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank all the speakers for taking their time to come out today. I really want to commend all the young speakers that came to support what they believe in. You know, during the discussions, we heard people say that art is good, that learning about art is good, about sharing art is good. And I don't think that any of us on the council would disagree with that. We agree with that. I am a very big fan of art, I produce music, you know, so I understand a lot about the artistic process. Now, when we look at our motto right here, pride in the past, faith in the future, you know, you think about the history of the city, and you hear about the residents talking about that, we're talking about pride in the past. And when we look here at faith in the future, it's to have faith in the young people and what they can do, right? Now, I would ask myself, how do we achieve both of those goals without offending one or the other? And again, as my colleague had said, it still escapes me why another location can't be selected. I don't believe the city saying, no, we don't want sculptures in our city. I think we want them in our city, but we want them in certain places, you know, that the past and the future can appreciate. And a lot of times, you know, I think about history, and those of you who have had a chance to go see the Sistine Chapel, you know, Michelangelo's work, it's, it's an interesting story. He had his heart set on doing something else, which was this tomb. And they asked him to come paint this, and he kind of balked at the idea, he wasn't a painter, he was a sculptor. But he reluctantly accepted the commission, and now the Sistine Chapel is what it is. So even though you have your heart set on a location, I think that there's a way to find another place that would be just as complimentary to the statue, and also, as Councilmember Chan stated, could also open the door to creating something bigger than just one statue that's there for, for one year, or six months, or whatever. You know, I had had discussions with some of the members of the community, and in terms of sculptures, for example, you know, there, when I had an opportunity to travel and visit our sister cities, I was able to go to four of them, China, Mexico, Taiwan, and Japan. And it's interesting, because when I was in Morelia, Mexico, they have this very famous pink stone that they use to create the cathedral there. And they also have many renowned sculptors that do sculpture of that type of stone. When I went to China, in one part of the place that I visited in Trenzo, our sister city, one of the provinces or cities near there, they're very famous for stone, very exotic type stones. And one of the sister cities- exotic type stones. And one of the sister city members or people involved was saying, you know, we should have a sculpture of some of these stones sent to Monterey Park, which I thought that was a great idea. Now, like as, as I was saying, this can open the door to something bigger than just a one time statue. It could open up something to maybe a sculpture park. I know the city of Cerritos has a sculpture garden, you know, may open it, may open it up to something like that. Now, I, and during this discussion, right, there was a lot of people that were expressing things that I think we all agree with. It's just the location. You know, I, I don't see, I don't think or believe that all of you here should give up your mission for sharing art with the community, for providing art so that it can be shared with students and learning and all that kind of stuff, great stuff that you said, which we all support. But I don't think you should, should make this the do or die for your cause. Because the bigger cause is about expressing, is about artists expressing themselves and also having the art available for people to enjoy. I think that's the bottom line. As artists, I think you would all agree with that. It's not necessarily, it has to be here, or it has to be there for it to have meaning, or for it to be as beautiful or as artistic, you know, as it may or may not be. And it's all subjective, as, as councilmember Chan said, art is subjective. Some people look at something, they get nothing from it. Some people look at the same thing and they have strong feelings about it. So I have to respect past. I do want to encourage some kind of compromise for the future, for the next generation. So while I cannot, at this point, support the statue being at the Cascades Park, I am behind supporting what councilmember Chan said and some of the other mayor, Rial Sebastian, said about creating opportunities for our community and the surrounding communities to be exposed to art, to have that opportunity to whether it be sculpture, paintings, whatever. You know, so I don't know what discussions were had regarding that. I know that we had the discussion initially about not moving it. And then when it came back as still being there, I just, it just, you know, maybe there needs to be more discussion as to an alternate location. Because we're not balking at art. We just feel we need to preserve that location because that represents our city. And for those of you who are residents, you know, like, like one of the speakers was saying about the fountain, that means a lot to us. You know, that's when I, you know, I live on De La Fuente, and earlier there was a little bit of chatter because if you live within 500 feet of an issue being discussed, you cannot vote on it, or you cannot be in the room. But I do live on that street, but I don't live 500 feet. I live further than 500 feet on that. So, you know, throughout the years, you know, when we walk, we walk our dogs, you know, we, we see the fountain. It's become an icon in our minds as residents, what it means to be in Monterey Park. And, you know, we had issues recently, I mean, in the past, you know, it was kind of rundown. And we had the grant money to repair it, to make it safe. It did not detract from the original design. It, it made it safer, right? So, you know, I myself, like council, like my colleagues that have spoken before, support the art, support arts in Monterey Park, but I cannot support it being at Cascades. So those are my comments.
Councilmember Ying.
My father immigrated from Canada, I mean, from China to Canada at the age of 15. And he wanted to be an artist and a sculptor. But his father, my grandfather forbid it because it wasn't the traditional role of a Chinese son. So he would throw away all of my father's art supply. And this is part of my father's biography. So my father, I felt, grew up, even though he owned a restaurant and he was successful in raising four children, he was a very pent up, angry artist. Because he wasn't fulfilling what he wanted to do in life. And he was an abstract artist, a Chinese abstract artist, which was kind of different. He idolized Andy Warhol and, and Jackson Pollock. And I would watch him paint things. If you ever watched Jackson Pollock just spill paint on the ground, that's what my father would do. Anytime that he saw an, an open surface, he would paint on it. Light switches in our houses, the basement of our four walls. It got to be somewhat embarrassing because I couldn't invite my friends over. Because my dad was very creative and wanted just to paint anything that he can get a hand on, handle on, even, even a glass Coke bottle. He would paint flowers on it. And he started to do this at the restaurant. And the university started noting what he was doing, the art students. And they would come over and visit him. He actually became well known when I came out here and attended UCLA, because my best friends would call me and say, hey, by the way, do you know your dad's on the news? They're actually doing a documentary on your dad that airs throughout Canada twice a year about him as an abstract artist. And I was at UCLA at the time, and I, I said, really? And my dad would call me and say, hey, you know, John Cougar Mellencamp, the musician, just came to buy my art piece. He flew in from Indiana and just bought something for me. Wasn't quite sure who he was, but he gave me the name John Cougar Mellencamp. Much Music, which is the Canadian equivalent to MTV, had two episodes and two shows from my father's restaurant. And I was still out here attending college, so never experienced it live. But he actually had a one man provincial art show. They gave him the entire museum, and he was able to display maybe 30 of his art pieces. It's unfortunate that in his life, he developed diabetes and he actually went blind. So how ironic it is for an artist to no longer see. And he was hospitalized. Art runs through our blood. When I went to my high school reunion, even, even though the last one was 35 years ago, 25 year anniversary or my reunion, I went back and my classmates said, what are you doing in California? And I said, I'm an elected official. They, they had no idea because I was never in student government. Never thought that I'd be an elected official. And I said, I'm a banker, branch manager. And they thought that I, they actually thought I'd be an artist, because I was an artist in high school. Because it runs through our blood. And they said, we thought you would pursue art somewhere. And I said, no, I'm actually sitting at a desk. And they said, you must be screaming inside creatively, wanting to get out of your desk and, and do something. And I said, yeah, I, I do. Maybe in my retirement. But I have two children. My daughter's in pharmacy school, my son's graduating from UC Irvine. None of them ever took a class in art, but they have the talent of my, my, my father. And so it runs through the blood. And in fact, my, my father-in-law is an artist at Art Affair in Laguna for the past 20 years. He actually did their millennial poster of the year 2000, the poster. And he was displaying his artwork for over, over 20 years. He was an architect at DWP, but on the side, he would airbrush and he would do watercolors. And he would be in Laguna, displaying his artwork. So actually, my kids have both the genes of, of their grandfathers. But the reason why I show you this is because many times, I see young artists in our community, and most of them from, from YouTube, Wongfu Productions, Just Kidding Films, Kev Jumba, the Fang Brothers. They would call me for the past eight years and ask me if I can find a location for their shoots. And I would do this for free. And I said, sure. I, because I know the property owners, I, I can get permission. So for the past eight years, they've been calling me. I've supported everybody from ABC and MTV, Quest Cru, Kinjas, because they also need shoots and, and, and places to shoot. So for the past eight years, I've been helping them. And they turned to me and said, why do you do this, Mitchell? Why do you, you're, you're our father's generation. Why are you helping us? I said, it's because my father never got the support that he really wanted as a young artist and a young sculptor. Because my grandfather wouldn't allow it. And I just felt, you know, you guys are talented. If, if you need anything, give me a call because I can, I can make it happen. Looking at this issue, I have no doubt, when you talk about it's a learning tool, it's a creative knowledge, it's enrichment, it's educational, inclusive, progressive, cool and, and fresh, culturally enriching, diversity, educating the public. There's no question, art does that. And I'm not prudish in any way. But you have to understand, I mean, when you did make a proposal of bringing Eve sculpture, and she is semi-nude, okay, and with an Asian face, it's going to stir up controversy in the neighborhood. You have to admit that. I'm glad you didn't, you didn't choose Adam, because Adam is fully exposed. And, but it's still art. And once again, I'm not prudish. I'm just saying, where do you put it? Obviously, nobody wants it in their front yard. Nobody wants it closer to the neighborhood where children are playing in the parks. And I think the council can decide. And we'll find a place for it. It may not be at the Cascades because the residents don't want it there. There's also liabilities, there's also liabilities that I know our city attorney is going to have to work out. Because it's, it's a statue that's not donated to the city, where we take full responsibility and liability for. It's a statue that's only lent to us for a year. So what happens if something happens? Somebody gets injured, some, or somebody vandalizes it? Who's responsible? But I know the city attorney would have to work through all that legal details. The question is, we're all appreciative of art. But the question is, where do you put Eve? Where do you put it in the city? And that's, I think, for maybe the historical society and for the other commissions and even the council to, to delve further. Our city is brought, is seven and a half square miles. We have development in this area that probably will welcome statues. And, and we can talk to them. We can talk to the owners and said, would you like this displayed? But there obviously, there is a place. We just have to find where it is. Whether it's indoors or another location, whether it's by Garvey Ranch Park, by the museum, I think we have to discuss that even further. And I'm open to hear further comments from my colleagues.
Well, thank you, councilmembers. And along the lines, and I was talking right now to our city attorney a little bit about the various locations, that's something that we need to direct staff to go look at various locations that might be suitable to be determined by the city, by staff or the city council. We would also need indemnity, language, information. And then we'd need to determine if, if the art piece is a donation, which means they would give it to us in perpetuity versus if it's just a permanent, a permanent, I mean, I'm sorry, a temporary grant. But that would have been, is that what it would be called? It's a lending, okay, temporary lending. Then we would need to look at different, different set of factors. I mean, are we going to charge for a temporary lending of their art piece? Because now it's becoming a commercial venture perhaps for somebody else because they're going to take that piece. So these are all, I think, issues that we would need to have staff come back to us with a recommendation. And are there any other, any other ideas? Or do you want to discuss it tonight? Or is that something we want to give staff direction?
May I respond?
You know, I, I will allow you to respond, please.
Really appreciate all of your input. As we said from the beginning, it was a site-specific proposal. So if you're not interested in having it installed at the Cascades, then we will rescind the proposal.
Okay, thank you. I, I think, I think that, thank you. So with that, regardless of whether it was going to be equitable vitrines or not, I think going forward, we do need to have an art plan or art donation, whatever you want to call it, plan. And is that something that you all would be amenable to directing staff to come back with the proposal? Well, it doesn't matter whether they rescind it. I think we still need to have one in place. Because the next equitable vitrines might come in and say, we would like to have this placed at somewhere in the park. And we can say, okay, well, these are the designated locations that the council has approved.
That we, I think, mayor, I think we should discuss when the time come, when it comes to, to us. We can think further when there's nothing proposed for us to talk about. So we can make decision on item 6D.
No, absolutely. We'll make an, a decision on item 6D, but we'll direct staff to come at a future date with a proposal to us so that that way in the future, if anybody wishes to donate art pieces to the city of Monterey Park, we already have a plan set in place.
I disagree that because...
And there'll be more clearer guidelines.
We, I disagree because I, we don't have to spend unnecessary manpower on those things not even coming up yet. So I think we should wait whoever donate things. At that time, we talk about, at that time, we give the staff direction, not to spend time right now.
Gentlemen, any comments?
Mayor, I just want to make a comment, not necessarily about that item, but to the speakers and the people that are speaking in favor of it. As artists, art, art is a creative process. So, and it's not necessarily the sculpture part of it, or the painting part of it, but also how to get it where you want it to be. That's also part of a creative process. So, I mean, if, if the question, if the outcome or the goal is that you want to share art with the community, and I know you withdrew it already, but just to, you know, consider what I say here, is that if that was your goal, and the question was, and, and the, the question was, we can do it, how can we do it where we don't use it at the fountain and still reach our goal of exposing people to art? Then, I mean, I would think that from an artistic mind, the creative mind would come up with that answer.
You know, actually, I have to say, I'm quite dismayed, as a resident of Monterey Park, that you withdrew. Because I thought that if for some, if we could find a suitable location, as, as councilmember Liang said, the interest here would be to truly educate, display, and share that artwork with as many people. And not say, no, it's got to be here or forget it.
I would love to respond.
Please come and respond. That, that left a very negative taste in my mouth.
Right. So the reason why we wanted to bring this Eve sculpture to the fountain is because of the juxtaposition between those two sculptures, and also because the Eve was actually created at the same marble quarry and factory as the Athena that's currently there. So there's a connection between the artworks in that sense. And also, we think that the Eve, in the context of the Cascades with that other sculpture, is the crux of the project. So that's why it was rescinded. It's because conceptually, the project is Eve in the Cascades with the Athena. But one other thing I wanted to say is that I went door to door to 30 houses up and down De La Fuente, and also up and down Kingsford. And out of the 30 houses, I went to, 28 of the residents supported the project. And I have a petition here. We also went to the Monterey Park Farmer's Market and got signatures there too. So I just want you to know that although I respect, you know, the commitment of the speakers who came out tonight, we also got a significant number of Monterey Park residents to sign a petition for this project.
If, if the idea is to highlight the correlation between Athena and Eve, I think it would be also plausible to put it in another park and say, look, we have this Eve here in this park, who is also related to Athena in that park. So you can still make the connection that way. I'm just, I'm just really disappointed. But thank you, thank you so much. You may take a seat.
It's because of the...
Okay, thank you. I think we got it. Thank you, ma'am. So gentlemen, is there any further discussion? Do you have any other comments? And the reason why I was pushing for an art program or a plan is to encourage artists to come to say, look, the city of Monterey Park has an art placement plan. Please come with your art because we welcome it. We want to see what you have, and we'd like to start this program here in the city of Monterey Park. Without a plan, then we're just hoping that somebody might stop by and be interested in our city. That was my comment. But is there a motion or any further discussion, gentlemen?
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I suggest? Because now, this is not, your idea is good, but it's not pressing.
No, no, it could be at a future date. It doesn't have to be...
So maybe, I would suggest that, why don't we bring it up? It's council's suggestions that we will have a retreat or...
It's council's, uh, suggestions, that we will have a retreat, or some gathering, at that time, so you can be one of the project at the time...
Perfect.
That we can talk about.
Good idea. Okay, so is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, but, but I think they rescind, so there's no need to...
We'll still have to make decision from the city officially, I think.
Let's just make it official.
Yeah. Uh, 6D, I'd like to make a motion to deny a proposal by equitable, verturing nonprofit or organization to place a statue named Eve halfway up the Cascade Park Hill, which includes providing all maintenance and all potential liabilities. Do I have a second?
Is, okay, that's your full motion, then, uh, is there a second on? I'll second it. Please vote.
Vote unanimously, motion carries.
Well, again, I wanna thank all the speakers, everybody that came forward, and with that, let's take a, let's take a ten-minute break.
Conversation. We're missing two council members and our city clerk. Okay, we will resume the council meeting. We will move on to item 6E, Adoption of a Resolution of the City Council. The City of Monterey Park Approving and Adopting the Memorandum of Understanding Between the City and the Monterey Park, the Monterey Park Police Officers Association, Fixing the Rate of Compensation, and Other Terms and Conditions of Employment for Represented Employees for the Term, July 1st, 2016 to June 30th, 2018.
Do you like your report?
Yes.
Tom Cody, our Director of Human Resources and Risk Management, will do the report.
Dear Mayor and Members of the City Council, the resolution before you today requests approval of the 2016-2018 Memorandum of Understanding for the Monterey Park Police Officers Association. City Representatives have been meeting and conferring in good faith with members of the Police Officers Association for the past nine months, and we were able to reach agreement on new terms and conditions of employment. The previous two-year contract, while the city gave cash payments and increased benefits to the members of the Police Officers Association, this contract represents the first salary adjustment since January of 2010. The terms of the MOURs follows: A 5% salary increase retroactive to July 1, 2016; a 5% salary increase July 1, 2017; 2.5% salary increase January 1, 2018; increased contributions for some benefits such as medical, dental, longevity. The total approximate cost of the two-year contract is $1.2 million. These changes were consistent with the direction given by council to staff during the negotiation process and represents the city's effort for retention and recruitment purposes to keep Monterey Park competitive in comparison to other San Gabriel cities of similar size and fiscal condition. I'd like to acknowledge the members of the Police Officers Association's negotiating team and their work concluding these negotiations. That concludes my comments. Staff recommends approval of the resolution before you.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Cody. Do we have any speakers?
We have two speakers.
Okay, can you please call the speakers? Thank you.
First speaker Nancy O'Curry.
Good evening again, and I want to thank the members of the Monterey Park Police Officers Association for finally agreeing to accept the city's best offers, and Tom Cody has already expressed what they are. And according to several business and hotel owners, in 2018, we should have the first division of the marketplace opened with additional sales tax and one or more of the hotels open for an additional 12% bed tax, as well as large increase in commercial property tax that'll provide additional funds to increase the salaries to all of our employees in the future. Monterey Park is a family of residents, business owners, and employees, all who work together to keep our city safe and secure. Our family budget must be balanced on the needs of everyone who live and work in our hometown. Each year, the cost of living is increased, so each year, the city budget is adjusted to try to meet the needs, the financial needs of all of our employees. Our residents living on fixed incomes in our city appreciate your wonderful service to us in our time of need. Please remember that we are all your employers who live on a smaller slice of the American financial pie when you negotiate your salary increases. This council should remember that the federal funds annually paid to our police department may be lost because Monterey Park City Council voted on February 15th to become a safe zone in lieu of a sanctuary city in violation of President Donald Trump's January 25th executive order, or when California becomes a sanctuary state. Our Los Angeles County Sheriff, Jim McDonnell, has warned all of the California elected officials that he will not be able to protect us from harm without the help of our federal government. The first priority of our city council is to protect the health and safety of our residents, business owners, employees, and our visitors. Please vote to approve this contract with the members of our police department. Thank you.
Ms. Norris.
I will make this brief. First of all, labor negotiations are not always easy, and they're not often without contention. So I'd like to start by thanking Tom Cody for being patient and working through the process as it's constructed under statute and through our convoluted and sometimes deeply involved personal relationships. Next, I'd like to thank the council for their direct involvement at the end. I think that pushed it over the edge and allowed us to reach an amicable solution to what was an otherwise apparent intractable problem. We appreciate that. Thank you very much. And then finally, I hope that we're going to get a unanimous vote from the council to show your support for the members of the association. So on behalf of the association members, I'd like to thank each of you for your vote in advance, and have a good evening.
No other speakers?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Chan?
Thank you. Thank you, the speakers, and also want to thank the staff, especially Tom Cody and the POA representative. To put this together is a long and not easy negotiation, but it's give and take, and finally, we got to an agreement, which we'd be all happy. And of course, we would like to look after our employees, including the officers and everyone working in the city. And so we would love to work with you guys, and whatever happened, happened. And we should put anything that's, anything in our mind, forget about that. We turn the page and move forward regardless of the situation. Sometimes, you know, management and labor negotiations, sometimes it's getting out of hand, and some excitement there maybe, but once it's done, we are all in the family. So that's the most important thing, is that we have to work together for the sake of the city, for the good of all the residents. So I want to thank the management and the Police Officers Association that go through and endure all the uneasiness in coming to a conclusion, so which we'd be happy and you'd be happy. And I think the most important thing is the city will be happy, all the residents will be happy. So let's work together for the betterment of the city and for the residents. I will approve this. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Hans Young.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll just make my comments very brief. I want to just thank and commend both our management team and the union for reaching an agreement.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes, as you know, that in probably the spring of 2018, we're going to have the completion of the first phase of the marketplace. And there are hotels being built in our city, and we know that we're going to have to grow our police department to cover a wider area. And in order to do that, you have to make sure that our police department is being paid comparable to the surrounding areas if you want to retain the best, and also to recruit. And I'm glad that the Monterey Park Police Association and with our staff was able to come together in good faith, although it took almost a year. Hopefully, next time, it won't take as long. But for us to come together and be in an agreement, and we want to thank the men and women of the Monterey Park Police Officers Association for being out there to protect and to serve us. Thank you very much.
Mayor Potam Lam?
Yes, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank you, men and women in uniform here, the safety units, for being here tonight. I want to thank you for, you know, your contribution of your services to the resident of Monterey Park. And it's my duty and job to make sure that you have proper pay, which will be comparable at least to surrounding cities. Anything that the city, you know, my philosophy is that when it's need to spend money, we need to spend money. We even, you know, when we have needs, we even have to move the money from reserve sometime to spend money because it's needed. So when we have enough money earned later on from different revenues, we put it back to the reserve. So safety is always number one issue in the city. A city without safety, no, I think it's for somebody else, right? Not for me. Thank you, Mayor. So let me finish. Okay, that's not for me, though.
City clerk, there's nobody standing there, city clerk, you know?
Yeah. It was a false alarm. So I drove on the road, just like you guys, you know, to work and back home. I always have you guys in my heart because you're the one in frontier and then the first one put your uniform in taking your life in risk. The most dangerous job has been as a police in the city, I think. It's even more dangerous than when you were in military, because we don't have a war every day, but you have war every day on the street, putting people in arrest, you know, in jail, patrol, you could encounter, any type of thing can happen to you. So I always appreciate from bottom of my heart, and not just me, my whole family, my wife, my mom, my kids, they always say, Dad, you need to improve the police's pay and increase their benefits, and said they're the one who work very hard, that's why we have safety in the city. Without city, without safety, we can't, we don't have anything in the city. And people have nice home in the plywood areas, you know? If without you guys, they, all areas, I mean, well, you know, bad guys like to get in those good areas. They think that they have cash or, you know, accessory stuff. But I appreciate your hard work, and it took a little while this time, I think. I'm new, but I'm always with you, always supporting you, backup you. Because I, when I, when I run for my campaign, I said, I'll do my best to support police and fire. I wanted to cash it, not just talk, and I wanted to make it happen so that you guys won't say Stephen Lam is a liar. So I want to cash it. Also, I understand that each one of you has a family to feed. Although your pay compared to some of the department looks good, looks high, but then, you know, so much danger in you, your kids, your wives, all relying on your income. So I always put those considerations in my mind when I, we had so many close session talks. You might not know what we talk about, but then we had so many times talking. I appreciate that Human Resource, Tom Cody, for your efforts, and also we hired another consulting company, I think, for their efforts, and now city attorneys' efforts, city managers, all the people who had involved in this negotiation, just like Councilmember Chan said. Whatever, whatever had happened before, it's, it's fine, you know, it's, we're all family members. A lot of time, we have son and father, they have argument, you know, they wash their face, come out from the bathroom, you know, they hug, they, father and son, right? We're a family, we're like brothers. So whatever, anything had happened, I don't think it's a problem, because when it's done, it's a deal, it's a deal, it's done. So nothing will be buried in mind for any longer. With that, I'd like to thank you again for protecting us, protecting the resident of Monterey Park. And do you stay here in the city of Monterey Park? We try to do our best to make more money to, to pay you guys and then to pay fires and all the department employees. We try to maintain the standard, maintain the quality of service, try to bring up the average pay at least, you know, above medium in the neighborhood, not below medium. So that was my suggest. Or if it's possible, when we have a lot of project done, we move it to the top of the list. Why not, right? Why always want to be middle? Be the top, right? Be the leader in the, in the, in the area. To show other cities how proud we, we have for our police and making sure that all state, all officers stay here, making other people wish to apply to be our police member here in the city. That's the way to go, not to scare away or not to underpay people and then you guys go around to search for new job. That's wrong. We hope that you can work for the city and then retire from the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Potam. And I too, I'd like to thank staff, Mr. Cody and, and even, you know, Ron Boe, I think when Ron came on as our interim city manager, that's when he really started to push a lot of what was going on with the negotiations. And for those of you that are at home, in our police division, Mr. Cody, correct me if I'm wrong, we've got, we have three separate unions, correct, for our police department?
That's correct.
Okay, so we were, this is, is one of the unions. And I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I'm glad that we're done with the negotiations and, you know, I, I don't ask for your endorsement, I don't ask for the endorsement of the fire department, because at the end of the day, my responsibility is to the residents of Monterey Park. And as such, it's, my responsibility is to make sure that, you know, we can pay our bills and we can pay people. And as much as we try to, to make sure that everyone is well compensated, you know, sometimes our budget precludes us from that. And you all know that, because you took that 5% cut way back when, and I really want to help, thank you again for doing that, and the city did repay you back that 5%. And, you know, during the following years, what was it? Let me see, there was some slight increases in medical, dental, and vision. And then in 2014, 16, there was a 3% cash lump payment, was it each of the, each year of the two-year contract, and that was about $649,000 cost to the city. And this last time, you know, as we went back and forth, the deal, as Mr. Cody said, it's 12.5% over two years, and that's going to be about a $1.2 million cost to the city. And the reason I say that is, I know residents came out and spoke, and there were residents that didn't want to come up and speak. They, they support you, they see what you do, but they wanted to make sure that the final amount that was reached was something that was doable. Because as I mentioned, I can say, let's give you 25%, but you know, that's not possible. And so residents wanted to come up and say that, but again, they were concerned, you are the police department. If they called, you know, for an issue at their home, they, they felt that it was best to just not come up and say anything, but I did want to relay that to you. The other thing is expectations, this, with this 12.5%, I know during the last few council meetings, people came up and said, well, you know, they work really hard, a crime is up, and I'm relating to you what residents told me, they're expecting that, that crime will come down. You know, I know you were saying you were underpaid, you were overworked, and so I'm relating to you what residents have relayed to me. And one of the reasons that I agreed to have two council members present during the negotiations was because it was brought to our attention that these negotiations were going a little bit awry. And I understand negotiations, you know, it's tense, you know, you start up here high, we start low, and hopefully, we meet somewhere. And sometimes, it's a struggle to get there, but we need to be professional about it, especially when we're bringing in an outside law firm to represent us. And it was brought to our attention that there was severe profanity by one of the negotiators in that room that was directed at staff, it was directed at our police chief, and it was directed at the city of Monterey Park. And the reason I'm relaying this to you is that I hope this never happens again. And maybe you all are not aware of it, but to me, I thought it was something important because if we're going to have a good relationship, and if we're going to say, hey, whatever happened, happened, let's shake hands now and move forward, we need to have a better understanding of what negotiations means. And with that, I also have to talk about something that happened to me personally that I thought went a little bit beyond negotiations. It was Saturday, I was at home, and all of a sudden, my personal phone started ringing and ringing and ringing, and when I answered the phone, people would start yelling at me. First person, I thought, okay, wrong number, but their number was logged in. And then another call came in, and I'm asking him, sir, what is this about? And he's yelling, I can't understand what he's saying, and he hangs up on me. I called back the number, and I said, hi, you just called my number, you know, this is Teresa, may I ask what this is in regards to? And he goes, I didn't call you. I said, sir, your number is here registered on my phone, what is this about? And he goes, I didn't call you, stop calling me, click. And it kept going on and on and on. And some people that called and some I let go to voicemail were extremely belligerent, very rude, and some were threatening, to the point that I was very nervous about what was going on. And so luckily, one person did leave a voicemail message that I understood, and I called him back and I said, sir, you know, you just called my phone, you know, I, I'm calling you back, what is this message in relate, in regards to? And he said, oh, I'm here visiting my parents, and I just got a call about a survey regarding the police department. And the survey is an automated, you know, operator, or whatever they're called, and it'll say, if you want to participate in this survey, press 1 for yes, 2 for no. And then, do you support the police department? 1 for yes, 2 for no, about pay, about the level of service, et cetera, et cetera. And then at the very end, it said, if you wish to speak to somebody at City Hall, press 7. And it was directed to my personal cellphone. I, at that point, felt something that I never wanted to feel in the city of Monterey Park. I felt that I couldn't even call my police department to let them know about some of the threatening calls, because I was concerned about who was going to end up at my doorstep because we were in negotiations, and I had just found out that the POA was the one that was conducting this survey. So I want to thank, I want to publicly thank our police chief, because when I called him, he had some very kind words, and he stayed on the phone with me until, you know, we talked. But I don't have an issue with conducting surveys. You want to use my city phone, public phone, that's fine. You want to send emails to my city email, that's fine. But when you start sending them to my private phone, that is not professional. That is not what I would expect from our police department. And the reason I want to bring this up is because I never want this to happen again. I never want another council member to have to go through that again. My niece was at my house, and my niece was listening to the voicemail messages, and she heard me telling my husband what was going on, and her comment to me was, Terry, why is the police department bullying you? And that's a perception that a child got. So I, I didn't know whether to bring up this story or not, but I needed you all to know, and I would really ask that your president, please contact me and let me know who it was that forwarded my personal cell number to the survey company. I respectfully request that you at least provide me with that information. So I'm glad we get that all out. Now we can shake hands and move forward. And I really do hope that we can continue to work together, we can learn from what happened, and we can have a better relationship going forward. And I, you know, as I said, I am a supporter of the Monterey Park Police Department and what you do. I do believe that safety is paramount. People don't feel safe, nothing else matters, but there's, there's a way to go about it when we're doing negotiations. So with that, I just want to thank you, I want to thank staff again. I know this was a very challenge, it was challenging at times for both sides, but we got through it. And I, I asked the assistant city manager, you know, I'm going to just call you city manager, I asked the city manager to please bring in Ms. Young, who's our controller. And Ms. Young, one question I always have is, this $1.2 million cost, since this cost is retroactive to July 2016, and we're now in '17, where are these funds going to come from?
Madam Mayor, the fund, probably, we will use the reserve.
Well, I know.
The general fund reserve.
Okay, and what is the balance in the general fund reserve from which you will take it out from?
In the general fund reserve, we have roughly $4 million and designated portion, and that one is pretty much the city can use for any of the budget adjustment.
Okay, so we're going to take out 1.2 million, so we'll be left with about 3.8 of undesignated reserve fund for other things that may come up.
That's correct, and we also anticipate the big ticket item for, from Home Depot or Costco eventually in 2018, so that will be my hope.
Well, as I say, from your mouth to God's ear. And, and I know everyone here on the council is pushing to, to get those completed and bring others, other retail sales to our city, so I just wanted to be very clear of where we have it and what the balance will be on that unreserved general fund account.
Definitely, staff will pay very much attention to our reserve.
Okay. And I have no other comments. Gentlemen, any comments, or would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I just have a, you know, councilmember Ying and I had, were reviewing the, the item, and Mr. Cody, if you can give us some clarity on item 3 under 6E?
It says, approved side letter number 1 of the Monterey Park Fires, Firefighters Association, 2016 to 2018 Memorandum of Understanding.
Yeah, during, yes, councilmember, during the negotiations with the Firefighters Association, we met in good faith with them. We did have a contract they, they requested, and the city gave them a reopener clause in their contract. If there's a substantial difference between the POA and fire association, as they shared the same slippage in the San Gabriel Valley salary survey, they, they pretty much resided on, in the same, they slipped as much as, as the POA did. So the council felt it was, if, it would be fair.
So should that?
So that, that will bring them, their contract had a 5% raise, a second step the second year, that, that second step will turn into a 5% raise, and they'll get 2.5% January 1st of 18.
Should that be included in the language of the motion? Because on the item, the actual motion item, it doesn't, do we need to include that, city attorney?
Sure.
Sure? And just a second comment, I received those calls too, but none of the ones that I answered, people yelled at me, but I, I did get a flurry of calls as well.
I got the calls on Saturday. I understand, councilmember Chan, you got them on Sunday?
Yes.
When did you receive the calls, Hans? Do you recall?
For the date, but it was for maybe two days, two, two or three days where it was occurring.
Okay.
Anyway, I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution approving implementation of the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Monterey Park and the Monterey Park Police Officers Association, and authorize the expenditure of $329,000 for the 2016 to 2017 fiscal year, and amend the 2016 to 2017 budget accordingly.
I'll second it.
Before I ask for the vote, Mayor Potam, did you receive any calls from a survey?
I remember that I always have like 100 calls a day. I remember that I always have like 100 calls a day. I have like, I have like 100 emails a day, so I have two phones. So I didn't pay really attention who called, but usually I saw some unknown.
Okay.
And I didn't pick up, so it might be somebody calling me. I didn't identify who.
Thank you. And how about council member Ying?
I don't believe I received any. I do not usually answer phone calls that I don't recognize.
Well, and I forgot to also mention that the number that I was using is going to be, I'm sorry residents, but I'm shutting down this phone number. And the city, I asked the city to please provide me with a very inexpensive city phone. So now there'll be record of every call that is made here and any voicemails, which will then be forwarded to the city. So I have a new phone number, and that is 626-800-7197. Again, that's 626-800-7197. Thank you. So, yep, very inexpensive, I don't even know what this is. It doesn't even have internet. I just asked for phone.
It's a recycled phone that we've had in our system, so we just recycled it.
I just need one phone. I don't want to carry two.
Okay.
Yeah, but call for the question.
I have two phones, but it's all personal.
Okay, so with that, please vote.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, hold on a moment, please.
So council member Chan made a motion for item 1, 2. Does that also include 3, or is that going to be-
No, 3 will be separate.
Separate.
3 will be separate, okay, thank you.
Yes, the fire.
Most unanimous, motion carries.
Now I would like to move the number 3 to approve the side letter number 1 for the Monterey Park Firefighters Association, 2016 to 2018 memorandum of understanding.
Is there a second? All second, please vote.
Most unanimous, motion carries.
Okay, so now we will move on to 6F, professional services agreement with SpiderTech for Engage software, and I'd like a staff report, please. Thank you.
Chief Smith and Captain Coaday will be presenting this item. I do know that they have a PowerPoint presentation, so they'll load that up and get started shortly.
You ready? Okay, good evening, council. As one of the things that we try to do within the police department is improve our outreach to the community. I recently, back in fall of last year, became aware of a company that interacts with our CAD-RMS system for us to have more real time and quicker follow-up with our victims of crime, and allows us to do a number of things. And so we started beginning talking with SpiderTech with regard to their Engage system. Engage is a community relationship management platform for law enforcement that integrates with the department's records management and dispatch systems. What it does is it uses information from reports to engage the community. It automatically generates letters and other outreach information for the community that can be emailed to them, creates and maintains a database with the contact information for victims and neighborhood groups, and it automatically attaches and sends documents to community as necessary, such as follow-up information, crime prevention information, and crime statistics, et cetera. The system benefits are that victim or the reporting part, is to get more victim and reporting party outreach. Automatically, there's automatic and targeted surveys. One of the neat things is they currently have this engagement in English and Spanish. And with bringing us on, they're going to go into having it in Chinese as well. And which covers all the three major languages in our community. And it allows for victims to be able to connect with the investigator for investigator updates. The current process, just to kind of quickly explain it, the process we've been using for years is a crime report's taken by a patrol officer that gets processed through, gets to a detective, depending upon whether there's a suspect in custody and some other solvability issues. It may take any place from a day to three or four days to get to a detective. The detective will then, depending on solvability, a lot of times depends on any follow-up with victims. And so, once that's done, the detective will review the case. If applicable, they'll contact the victim by phone. You know, in crimes like residential burglary, our community services bureau personnel will review logs, find reports, and contact information, follow up with victims with crime prevention information. By utilizing the Engage system, what will happen is the officer takes a report. The report is processed, which happens the same day as the report's taken. Engage automatically creates a contact template. Our watch commanders, who are our service area lieutenants, will then, who also approve the reports, can, it'll almost become a simultaneous thing where they'll be able to review the reports. The Engage software will kick up a letter that could be sent. The watch commander will have the ability to add any personal note or anything if they need to or want to. That will get sent out. The information that goes to the victim will include the report number, a letter from the lieutenant. We can add on to that information about how to become a neighborhood watch member. Depending on the crime-specific information, we can put crime prevention information in so people know ways to better prevent crime in the future. In addition, and I think the next slide covered some of the things I just talked about, it also, the detective contact information, so they'll know who the detective is handling the case. The other information it gives us is it does allow us to use our database of email addresses for surveys, to get input from the community or to target areas. We have talked with them, our current database we have of, for example, our neighborhood watch block captains, our neighborhood watch program, things, we'll be able to utilize that so that we can better get information out to the community. Staff, we met, looked at the system, what it would take, did some negotiation. Because the economy, I guess, the scale, if we were able to do a five-year contract with them, it drastically reduced our costs, so we're, the five-year contract will be the same. We'll be paying what would be basically about three and a half years if we were going on a year-to-year contract with them for doing this. We have, in the contract will be one that's approved by the city attorney. The total cost is, for the five years, is $109,780. It's approximately $21,500 a year. And with that, if council has any questions? Oh, I, excuse me, I will add, since they've been sitting here all night, I do have here, from the company, Rol, I'm sorry, I'm going to blow your last name again, but Sidhu, who's the co-founder and CEO, and Mandy Duffy, who's the director of sales.
Hi, would you like to come up and introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about this Spider software, please?
Members of the council, mayor, staff, thank you for having us here today. SpiderTech is a company founded here in Los Angeles County. The goal of this company is to allow police departments and in the future, other government agencies to provide the level of customer service that most customers feel in the private sector from the public sector on sometimes a public sector budget. The company was based off of the fact that a lot of this data that exists within the police department and these other government agencies can be used to automate the process of notifying these customers of what to expect, educating them, and letting them know that entities like the police department are there for them. In the same way that you buy something from Amazon and you get that receipt that same day, what I'd like to say is imagine if Amazon didn't do that. Imagine how many people would be calling Amazon every day to ask them this information. And that's some of the troubles that government agencies tend to deal with when they can't automate the process of the customer service. So that is the goal of our company. When we met with the chief, he was talking to us a little bit about the unique, you know, challenges that the Monterey Park Police Department faces in regards to what they're doing now with the strategic plan. And one of the things he told us was how large of a Chinese-American population they have in the city of Monterey Park. And that's one of the things that was very exciting to us because we wanted to incorporate a multilingual element to what we're doing with this automatic engagement. So incorporated in our pricing was also the ability to build this, the ability to engage the Chinese-American citizens as well as the other citizens in the city and be able to utilize that for full engagement for the city of Monterey Park.
Well, thank you. And council members, any comments? I'll start with council member Liang. Any, yeah.
Yeah, just a quick question for the chief, and maybe if they can add to that. What's the learning curve system, and how is it going to be graded into your training?
So, most of the information that we need to do already, we already gather. So when we take reports, we already ask people if they want to give us their email address. That's one of it. The one thing that'll change will be, which will be pretty simple to do the training on, is we'll just have to have a checkbox or a way to, for the officer to tell the person, if we contact you via email, what language would you like it in? And that way, the victim or the reporting party will be able to choose that. The rest of it is just the lieutenant's learning, the system of which, you know, based on the demonstrations we've gone through, I am not the most computer adept person, but it was relatively easy for me to see how I would be able to access this and get on and send the information.
So I'm curious, is this something that would have to be a handwritten report that gets transcribed into the system? Or is the report immediately typed in as it's-
All of our reports are done, we don't handwrite reports anymore, everything's done computerized. And so especially the type of reports we're looking for that would be utilized for the software. So their system integrates with our CAD-RMS system, and their software just pulls that information out, formulates the letters, and they're ready to be emailed out. And based upon geographically where the reporting district that it comes from would be which lieutenant it goes to to be sent out.
And they would be able to access that from the same UI, same user interface? They're not going to have to go to like a Kletz terminal, or you know what I'm saying?
No, no, and all our terminals are integrated now, so.
Great, thank you.
Council member Lam? I mean, Chan?
Thank you. Just, simple question, is that I know that you have messages and police reports also will be coming from this system. So are all those information admissible in court?
Well, anything that's sent out is, would be admissible in court, but we won't be sending out police reports to people. We'll give them the information how they can obtain it because there's a whole complexity to police reports and what you can give out. I mean, there's some reports that you may be the victim of, and there's portions of you can't have that part of the report. So we're not sending out the reports that way. It's the information about their report, who the detective is for follow-up, you know, what the following steps are, here's crime prevention information, et cetera. Those are, that's the type of information we're getting out.
See, so there's more like customer service?
Yes, yes.
Instead of-
Customer service and community outreach is what we're looking at.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam Lam?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I just wanted to know, is this budgeted from last year, or it's a new proposal? I forgot last year's budget.
Sorry, I pulled up the wrong. No, so for the budget, it would be a new budget. For the current year, we have money still in our account that we could use, in our computer service account. And we've already projected it out into the following year's budgets, in our building for the budgets for next year beyond.
Okay.
So, we had money in our computer services budget this year that we could use for this.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Yes, council member-
Yes, chief, it says that, that the staff was unaware of any other similar products that interacts with the department's CAD and RMS systems that can generate electronic letters. Is this being used at other police departments?
I'll let Rol-
And if you can give us the names of the police department that uses this tech software?
Yes, this is new technology, but it has been in use by police departments. The first police department to use this, when we launched, began using it last year. The name is Grover Beach Police Department in North California. Since then, we've brought on additional police departments. One other one in Los Angeles County, Redonda Beach Police Department. And one of our larger police departments, Tucson Police Department, which just recently went online in the state of Arizona. Additionally, we're working with the states of Texas and Vermont with some of the larger agencies there for larger rollouts as well. But California, considering that's where we are, and it's where I used to work as a police officer, is my main focus in ensuring that police departments here get to use the technology.
Oh, so you were a former police officer?
Yes, sir, I am.
So you understood the need for this software?
Absolutely. I was a police officer in the city of Redonda Beach as of a few years ago, actually, which is where I kind of came up with the idea of merging that private sector customer service with the need in the public sector to help improve public perception.
No, it's good coming from somebody who has the experience on both sides and seeing the need for it. If I can ask the chief, how did you discover this company?
I actually met him at a conference, FBI National Academy for State Conference. And it was a mutual acquaintance that's a, that works, the best way I could say her business is, is she like brings departments to vendors, you know, that they might need needs. I'm not one that generally talks to vendors, quite frankly. But she told me, you really got to listen to what these guys do because I know the type of stuff you want and that you're interested in community outreach. And I went over and met Rol, and that's what was going to be a very quick, oh yeah, thanks. You know, I'll call you, and me walk away. Turned into about a 20-minute conversation on this that I thought sounded good. Came back, ran it by some of my staff who thought the same thing, and then we brought them in to meet with us to get a demo.
They're not from Notre Dame or anything, are they? Because that's-
No.
You would end up spending 20 minutes talking to them if they were from Notre Dame. But, so you did do your background, if I can ask you, chief, that the other city said it's working?
Yes. It, from my understanding, it is. As he said, it's a new technology, and-
Have you placed that call, or anybody from your department?
Yeah, Redonda Beach chief is a friend of mine.
Okay.
Mayor, one extra question. Just one extra question, is our office is mostly English-speaking, and so residents is Chinese, so you know that, you can say it will translate. So that means the officer just type in English, and it will automatically translate into Chinese?
No, no, the letters that we're generating. So what they're going to do is, we're going to have basically a series of draft letters saying the information that people get. And those, that information, not the report itself, but that information that we're reaching out to, and I think Rol's example of, you know, when you order something from Amazon or somewhere, you automatically get that reply back from, thank you for ordering, and it gives you information. Well, that's basically what we're going to be doing here is, you know, we're sorry you're a crime victim, and here's the information, here's what you need to do, here's how you can further prevent crime. Those are the type of things that people will be receiving in whichever language that they select.
They select the language?
Yes, so the officer will ask them what language, you know, if they'll give us their email address. If they don't, we can't respond to them with this. But if they give us their email address, then we're able to have them tell us, you know, do you want the letter in English, Chinese, or Spanish? And the officer can check that box, and then that'll tell the system what language we need the letter in.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I need to ask you, are you a police officer that's an inventor? Or are you an inventor that was a police officer?
That's a good question. I've kind of worked in public safety as a paramedic as well. But law enforcement at heart is kind of my main focus. I didn't spend a tremendous amount of time as a police officer, to be honest, and I wish I really did. And I'd like to potentially stay as a reserve police officer at one of the police departments in Los Angeles County to continue as a police officer. But I believe from a full-time perspective, I'm a tech guy by nature, and that's what I've been since I was a child.
Okay, and- And Chief, so when these letters go out, is it's done via email? Now, so let's say I was to receive one, can I then reply? Or is this a one-way?
It's a one-way, but it will give you the information of the email address of who you need to respond or reply to. So it'll have, if, the way that we've talked about designing is so it'll have, you know, here's the detective and this is how you get, here's the email address for the detective. Here is our community relations, or excuse me, I changed the name, Community Services Bureau, you know, for crime prevention, here's how you, you know, here's the email address where you can get, and it'll have different key things within the city that we can do. So people will be able to find those and then respond back to those.
And what is the turnaround time? Like, let's say I'm a crime, a victim of a, of a crime, how soon can I expect to receive information from the police department?
Depending on how quick the report gets done and depending on what type of report it is, we're initially going to start off, when we start this, we're going to kind of ease into different crime areas so that we can, as I think Councilmember Liang asked, there is going to be some training curve so folks get used to. But our initial one is going to be residential burglary victims, and then we're going to expand that out to other crimes. But depending on the report, once the report's loaded into the system and completed, generally that happens the same day as the report's taken, there's some times that it might be a day later. Sometimes, you know, to end of the shift and there's no immediate reason for it to be done, it finished the next day. And then by the time the lieutenant looks at it, people should be getting this response, I would say, you know, I think Roel is going to say, oh, we can do it quicker, but I think practically for our folks in processing it through in the three-day range, because of the lieutenants that are having to look at it to send out the letters.
Okay. And then on here, you mentioned that by agreeing to a five-year term, we're going to be able to reduce the initial startup cost by $13,000 for the first year and $5,000 for each of the next four years. So this amount that you put down for fiscal impact, does that already take into account this $33,000 savings?
Yes.
Mayor, if we can extend, it's right now past 11:00.
I'll make a motion to extend to 11:30. Is there a second?
A second.
Please vote. I know Hans is going to vote, no.
Peter's not here, so.
Steven, we made them up.
All unanimous.
That's good enough.
If I could just comment quickly, we have 11 items remaining.
So any other comments, gentlemen, or is there a motion?
I would like to make the motion to authorize the city manager to execute a software agreement with Spider Tech Inc. in the amount of $109,780 in a form approved by the city attorney and authorize the city manager to approve change orders up to $10,978, up to 10% of agreement amount for this project.
I second.
Please vote.
Both unanimous, motion carries.
Okay. So now, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Next item is item 6G purchase of an electronic citation system and traffic collision database management system. And just to bear in mind that this entire project is funded through a grant. So is there a discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second. Please vote.
Both unanimous, motion carries.
Next one is authorize purchase of a replacement storage attached network and software. And gentlemen, I need a staff report on this.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Police Department routinely updates computer hardware and software as current equipment becomes inefficient or obsolete and no longer supported technology by the industry. The department's storage area network is recommended to be replaced. This was something that was in our CIP for our 2016, 2017 budget. The SAN stores critical police departments such as our CAD RMS data. The existing Stratus server, 5700 dual server, is approximately 10 years old and has reached the end of its life. The hardware will not support necessary software upgrades. The police department needs to upgrade hardware to maintain functionality as well as add future upgrades for the CAD RMS software. The proposed SAN will provide the extra space and speed needed to keep pace with current technologies and demands. City, City's Management Services Department issued a request for proposal on October 17th, 2016 to replace the city's SAN. West Coast Technology was the only company that responded to the RFP. Contract was awarded to West Coast Technology on February 15th, 2017. Staff requests to amend the contract to include replacement of the police department's SAN at a cost not to exceed $110,000. With that, I'm available for any questions.
Well, thank you. And I was hoping Mr. Chu Tai would be here tonight because when I read this agenda item, I recall the February 15th council meeting where there was an agenda item to execute the agreement with West Coast Technology to the tune of $225,000. And according to the staff report at that time, and this was presented by Mr. Chu Tai, he said staff recommends replacing the storage area network and necessary software. The new server will consolidate all existing servers into a single system and reduce maintenance and operating cost.
We have our own servers, we don't.
Well, this talked about the city needs to routinely, routinely update computer hardware. Nowhere on here did it mention that the police department had a separate server, and I quickly went through the council meeting and nowhere did it say, oh, by the way, the police department has a separate one. And now that this is coming, and lo and behold, it's with the same company. So I'm just wondering if this was done perhaps, and that's why I needed to ask Mr. Tai, if this was done in a way to get this, to have the council to approve the first batch, separate police, and then get them to, get us to approve the second batch, to try to just reduce the costs as they're presented to the council. So I am, does any, can anyone shed any information on that? Why was this not, why was this staff report? In my opinion, it was misleading. I'm reading it directly from the staff report. Anyone?
I can't speak to what Management Services request was because we have, our CAD RMS is a standalone system that is a requirement, and this was something that we had projected out, the upgrade in our 2016, 2017 budget, and something we were working on when we looked at having to upgrade the servers. Management Services has already done this. We consulted with the city attorney with regard to, rather than having to go back out to bid since the city had already done a bid on it, could we piggyback on that? That was our idea, looking at that, because there was already an RFP that had been issued by the city.
And at that time, when this item was brought to us back in February, according to Mr. Chu Tai, he said a request for proposal was issued and West Coast Technology was the only company to respond. I just, I understand that you need a new server. I just was hoping he would be here too, so that he could address this issue. Why was this not addressed when the initial server was brought to the council? Gentlemen, any other comments or questions?
This is just a technical question, I don't know if you know it, there's a, so this is basic, a network that's a, I mean, a storage that's attached to a network?
Let me get my technical person, let me get Captain Gordon down here and she can, she's more technically adept at this, and she's the one that's been doing the staff work on it, so she can explain that.
So our CAD RMS, all of the information from our CAD RMS, which is where all of our reports, all of our calls for service, that's where all that information is stored. So it's on a standalone server system.
So how is that different from a network attached stores, storage device?
Versus it being a cloud or, or anything like that, this is a standalone system, so everything gets processed through this storage system. It has to be, because it contains DOJ records and all that, it has to be a standalone system.
But it goes through a network, is that correct?
Only through our internal network. It's all, I guess the best, best way to describe it is, we only have access to certain icons and certain things that are attached to this specific server and this specific network. It's not shared with outside of the police department, it's only within the police department.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, gentlemen? Is there a motion?
Yeah, move to approve this.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Split vote. We have Councilmember Ying, yes. Councilmember Chan, yes. Mayor Protam Lam, yes. Mayor Real Sebastian abstains, and Councilmember Lang, yes.
Okay, thank you for that. We will continue then with item 6I, ambulance remount of RA 62 award of bid.
Move for approval?
I'll second.
Please vote.
Both unanimous, motion carries.
Award of contract firefighter uniform purchases, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please vote.
Both unanimous, motion carries.
Okay. Request to advertise fire station parking lot 61, parking lot reconstruction project. I did speak to our fire chief and there were some modifications that needed to be made, so let the record reflect that. Are there any comments, questions, or a motion?
Move to approve item 6K.
Please vote.
A second.
Sorry, second.
Second.
You guys want to move this along?
You guys moved too fast.
Second? Who seconded it?
I seconded.
Now you're both second. Okay, I'll third. Please vote.
Both unanimous, motion carries.
Okay. 6L, establishment of an appeals board. I need a really quick summary on this.
Director Michael Huntley will deliver the report.
It's okay, nothing. Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, this is really more of a housekeeping item. The city of Monterey Park Municipal Code incorporates administrative provisions from the California Building Code. Within there, it does identify certain administrative procedures. As the city council is aware, the end of last year, the city council did approve the most recent cycle of building code standards. Subsequent to the adoption, and it went into effect in January 1st of this year, staff is going through and identified the fact that we had not established an appeals board. Subsequent to that, went through what the code, had identified what the process was, did talk to the city attorney about this, and based on looking at this, we felt the most appropriate approach would be to appoint the planning commission as the appeals board for the city. So subsequent to that, there's a resolution in front of you tonight that I'm requesting you consider appointing the planning commission as the appeals board for the city. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. And the reason why I wanted an update is I did look up the California Building Code, and I looked up specifically their Board of Appeals. And although we, as I talked to our assistant city attorney, he did say that we are not adopting or we're revising the California Building Code, correct? Certain provisions?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, as you know, the city has the ability to amend certain parts of the building code. So when it did adopt the building code last year, it specifically adopted different provisions with regard to the Board of Appeals. As you know, Appendix B, which is in the building code, is not a mandatory part of state law. And so the city council opted to adopt different portions of the building code with regard to the appeals board. Those are set forth in section 16, something or other, it's getting late, 16.01.040 of the municipal code. And you'll see in there that there isn't a different type of appeals board that's contemplated. As Mr. Huntley indicated, however, there has never been an appointment to that board by the city council. The recommendation from staff was that the easiest way of doing that would simply be to adopt or designate the planning commission as the appeals board in order to expedite the process. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Thank you both of you. But as I looked at the Board of Appeals as it's laid out in the California Building Code, Appendix B, the qualifications for the Board of Appeals, it says, shall consist of five individuals, one from each of the following professions or disciplines. Number one is a registered design professional with architectural experience or builder. Two is a registered design professional with structural engineering experience. Three is a registered design professional with mechanical and plumbing engineering experience. Four is with electrical engineering experience or electrical contractor. And five is with fire protection engineering experience. So whereas what staff is proposing might be the easiest, I personally don't think it would, it's in the best interest of the city to sidestep what the California Building Code is suggesting that we have as members of our Board of Appeals. So my suggestion would be to perhaps designate the planning commission with the intention of having the proper Board of Appeals as listed in the California Building Code with people that have really the relevant experience to understand and digest such a, you know, complex code. So that's something I wanted to bring to your attention, gentlemen. Suggest that we appoint the planning commission, but with the intention of, you know, bringing in a proper Board of Appeals as soon as possible. Any comments? Yes, Councilmember Chan?
Look, well, this is the first time we look at this appendix, but based on this qualifications, I think it would be extremely difficult for our city to find the people to sit on with this kind of qualification.
You know, if you look in California under the, what is it called, where engineers have to be registered, Michael, if you could help me with that?
There's.
Stay bored of, what is engineering? You can look on there, and a lot of people have Monterey Park designated as, you know, their place for notifications, and there's many, many different engineers that live here in the city of Monterey Park that we all don't even know of.
But they have to come out and say, I want to serve.
Or, or we can contact them and say, you know, we've got this Board of Appeals, would you all be interested in applying and serving? Board of, now, this Board of Appeals might meet how often?
Maybe once a year at best.
So it's just. Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, if I can just provide you an anecdote, I've been practicing for quite a while now, and I can tell you that I've experienced one Board of Appeals ever being assembled in my entire career, and we actually had to find two new members to appoint to that board because the previous members had died in the interim. So it's extremely rare for the Board of Appeals ever to be assembled. Most people do not appeal the building officials' decisions to an appeals board, which is another reason that we suggested the planning commission, the planning commission simply be designated as a housekeeping item. But certainly it's up to the city council how you want to designate your appeals board. But as Mr. Huntley indicates, and based upon my own personal experience, it would be very rare, extremely rare for the appeals board to even hear an appeal from the building official.
Thank you. Well, it might be rare, but I think we still need to do it the correct way. Gentlemen, any comments or is there a motion?
Just a quick comment, I think that the planning commission can serve in that role, and I think that in the case where appeals issues may come up in the once-a-year potentiality there, that whatever the subject is or the appeal is, that we can call in somebody as an expert, an engineer, a design, a plumbing person to consult on some of those issues. Is that something that's permissible, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, the city council can always reexamine the composition of the appeals board if and when it comes up, and certainly the appeals board can always ask for outside help to explain the process.
And then with, if the appeals board, the five members were asking for expert input, would that person providing the input have to be a member of the board or they can just be some? just be somebody that's providing expert quote-unquote testimony?
They would act simply as staff liaison, in essence, providing the expert testimony that you would need.
I think that that's a -- we can proceed that way. We just form the appeals board with the commission, and then when and if those items come up, we'll have advanced notice of what the item is, and we can call in experts at that time.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve Item 6L, establishment of an appeals board, to have the Planning Commission serve in that capacity, and as part of their practice, if appeals do come up, that they seek the counsel of experts in that particular matter.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Please vote.
Split vote. Councilmember Ying, yes. Councilmember Chen, yes. Mayor Protem Lam, yes. Mayor Real Sebastian, no. And Councilmember Lang, yes.
Okay, next we go on to appointment of commission, board, and committee members for a one-year term beginning May 1st and ending April 30th. Gentlemen, who would like to speak?
Am I -- can I just by my declaration that I want to reappoint my current members, or do I have to list each one of them? Or is -- I mean...
The list is there, if you would just want to...
I know, I mean, do I need to say, "I appoint -- reappoint"?
Reappoint everybody.
So you're reappointing everyone that is presently...
Can I make that -- can I reappoint them by doing that rather than listing them separately?
I suppose.
City Attorney's saying yes. Okay, so then my comment is that I reappoint all of my current commissioners.
Well, there's -- you have two vacancies.
Those -- no, I don't have...
You don't have anybody to fill for that at this time?
So I'm talking to some people about that.
Okay, got it.
And I'm also reappointing everybody. I know I have Environmental Commission open, and Joseph Reitenberger is sent the letter that he will not be serving, so I have to find a replacement later.
Got it.
Yes, and I'll also reappoint everyone. I know that I have one vacancy in the Community Participation Committee, and I just appointed last council meeting on the Traffic Commission. Does that person, Alan, did he swear in yet?
He will be sworn in in May.
Okay.
I have a question, though. You said community participation. You have Tiffany and Victoria.
Oh, no, no. It's the Economic...
Development, right?
Development Commission, yeah.
Yes.
Yes, sorry. Make that mistake, yes.
Okay, Steven?
Yes, I'd like to appoint all existing board commission members except two persons. One is BDAC Attorney Fong. I wanted to hold on, and then also, I wanted to hold on Willie Yan on community participation. I heard that he didn't show up for twice or three times for meeting, so I'd like to find out what's going on, and before I made a decision for these two persons. Thank you.
I -- as I understand the processes, I just need to notify the city clerk, so I'll be notifying you next week, because I will have some vacancies that I'm going to need to fill. Some people cannot continue, so I will go ahead and contact you next week with my full list, and then I'll just make the announcement at the following council meeting. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarity, city clerk, my two vacancies are one in community participation and one on the commission on aging.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other comments, gentlemen? Okay, nope, so we move ahead. Item 6N, which is Denim Day, and that's being presented by Jim Smith. If you can have a quick recap on Denim Day, and that's why we're all wearing jeans except for Mitchell.
The reason I didn't participate today is I came from work, and I'm usually not in jeans at the bank.
Hey, council, as you all know, we've been celebrating Denim Day here for, I think this is our ninth year that we've been doing. Denim Day was established in 1999 after the California Legislature's Women's Caucus learned of a protest of a court decision that occurred in Italy. Enraged by the verdict and the judge's statement, within a matter of hours, the women of the Italian Parliament launched into an immediate action and protested by wearing jeans to work. This call to action motivated California legislators to do the same. Peace Over Violence, a Los Angeles-based sexual assault and domestic violence victims' advocacy organization promoted the idea of the first Denim Day LA, and Denim Day LA was created. Denim Day is now recognized throughout the United States. The United States government has declared April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. As part of Sexual Assault Awareness Month, Peace Over Violence has declared April 26th, 2017th as Denim Day in LA County and in the USA. We want to encourage folks to, both here in the workplace, people at their workplaces, maybe we can get the bank on board, but encourage folks to wear jeans on that day as a sign of support for victims of sexual assault, and as a reminder that -- of the problem that we have in both, not just in our country, but across the world with women being victims of sexual assault. And so our employees here will be encouraged to wear it. Probably see our officers out in the street wearing denim on that day, and we encourage people at home to do that as well.
Thank you, police chief, and I completely support this. I'll be -- I'm wearing denim today, and I'll definitely be wearing denim on April 26th, and I just want to let people know, especially women, you know, there's never an excuse for violence, so please, 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 you know, talk to someone about it. If you don't feel comfortable calling the police department, please talk to someone about it. There's never, never a good reason for sexual assault on anybody, man, woman, or child. So thank you with that. Any comments, gentlemen? Yes, Councilmember Chen?
Just to say that today, I'm happy that I'm wearing jeans, because one time, Mr. Larry Solomon saw me and say, "Do you have anything other than suit and tie?" So this is a proof to him that I do have jeans.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution declaring Wednesday, April 26, 2017, as Denim Day, Monterey Park.
Second.
Please vote.
Vote unanimous, motion carries.
Okay, then we'll move on to council communications. Just really quickly, I don't know if you all heard the news, but our governor has made statements that the drought is over, and so with that, I wanted staff to come back to us to discuss whether we still need to be in a stage-two drought alert here in the City of Monterey Park. I think a lot of people are doing a lot of conservation, and I think that that might be something worth looking into, and I was wondering what the council members felt about bringing back the drought effect on the City of Monterey Park.
Yes, I would support that.
Okay, so you have to council members. The other thing is, number -- the other update is, with the passing of Abel Castellanos, I remember our city treasurer had come up during oral communications, and he actually asked me about it, because his suggestion was the reward for information leading to the arrest of the gentleman who was involved with the vehicle collision into Mr. Castellanos, which ultimately caused his death, and it seems that there was a court hearing, and the gentleman that allegedly caused Mr. Castellanos' death never showed up. And so Joe had brought up the suggestion of putting up a reward, and nothing ever happened. It kind of fell through the cracks. And so I'd like to know, is there another council member that would like to explore that, possibly providing a reward for information leading to the capture of the gentleman that fled and who caused Abel Castellanos' death?
Yeah, I'm in support of that. I was surprised that he did not appear in court, and was the update is that he may have fled back to China?
I know our chief has some information on that.
Just to give you a brief update on it, what happened was, after the investigation's done by the California Highway Patrol, because it involved one of our employees, and so we don't investigate it because of the potential conflict of interest. And -- but we've stayed in contact with them. Ultimately, probably a couple months after the incident happened, DA's office filed one count, as my understanding, one count of misdemeanor vehicular manslaughter against the driver. There was a $150,000 warrant issued for him. Initially, they were given a court date to show up. He didn't show up. What we've been able to ascertain from that, because I've had our folks do more inquiry over the past couple years and track and try to follow what we can, is based on the information we have, he fled the country about a month after the -- or left the country, I should say, about a month after the incident occurred, and which is before the charges were filed. He's believed to be in China. We do have -- we have placed a customs alert or border patrol alert on him so that if he were to ever enter back into the United States, he would be held at that point. But that's the only information we -- that we've been able to ascertain. We followed up, we went to his old address, we've done all those checks, and we don't have anything other than him leaving the country, and no sign of him returning.
Yes, you know, gentlemen, I'm going to make a motion to extend it by 15 minutes. It's 11:30. Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Split vote. Okay. Councilmember Ying, no. Councilmember Chen, yes. Mayor Protem Lam, yes. Mayor Real Sebastian, yes. We think we could do it faster than 15 minutes.
Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Do we have any relationship with the China's police department through Interpol?
Yeah, we can, but we don't have an extradition treaty with China. I can give you, for example, I've not been an investigator now for, what, probably 18 years, and I still have a rape suspect there that we've wanted, that's on an FBI list that if he ever shows up and tries to come back in the country, we'll get. But unfortunately, you know, our hope is that somebody eventually will either convince him to come back to face the charges, or that he will at some point think that it's safe to come back, and that's why we put the customs alert on, because if he does come back into the country, then he can be held. But unfortunately, we don't have extradition treaty. So I can give you the example for my rape suspect. I know exactly where he is. The FBI's been in contact with the police there. They knew where he is. We can't get him back.
Thank you. Do you have a quick comment?
Yeah, I -- my question is similar to Councilmember Chen's. Are there any other ways that we could directly contact the security department in China and have them to help to identify or, you know, let us know where he is, so at least we know that where he lives? So we -- because I know that there's some of the person, they committed crime here. They're not supposed to send back to China, but we did allow them to send back to China, agreed by Obama.
So there's, at least the way it's explained to me, I can only go by my previous case that I've had, that's hung on to for years. Essentially, every once in a while, governments that we don't have extradition treaties will make a prisoner exchange, but the level of those prisoners is usually at a level that is a lot -- and this is very unfortunate, talking about one of my employees that was killed, but at a level that's higher than this, the way they look at things.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, well, we'll continue the discussion when it comes back. Thank you, police chief. And the last item I wanted to discuss that also seems to have fallen through the cracks was the airplane symbolic ordinance that we had had a discussion on it, and I believe there was support for it, and nothing ever came about it. Maybe it happened during the change of management or leadership here, and there were other issues that needed to be brought up, but I would really like to have a discussion on that and have staff put something together for us, and I was wondering if there was support from any other council members regarding that.
Yeah, I support that.
Okay, so, thank you. Is any council communications updates? Mayor Protem? Nothing to report?
Yeah, I think a cherry blossom is coming up, right, this weekend, so I just want to encourage the resident to join the festival, and it's fun. And other than that, just I want to thank the police for being here, and luckily, we get everything, you know, done and passed now, so everything moving forward, so everything back to the track. So I wanted the resident to enjoy a peaceful life. Thank you.
Okay, and really quickly, the city manager, we need to make a correction. The bike ride registration is at 7:00 PM in front of the library this Saturday, the Earth Day Bike Ride. The difficult ride, the 14-mile ride, that starts at 8:00, and the four-mile ride, which is an easier bike ride, starts at 9:00 AM. Okay, Councilmember Chen, any comments?
Yeah, just the -- this is -- will be my first time to miss the Earth Day and the bike ride, because I will be out of town this weekend, and so I miss that, and I will join for sure next year if my physical condition holds up another year. Thank you.
Councilmember Liang, any comments?
No, I have nothing in the interest of time.
Councilmember Ying, any comments?
Yes, please join us to the 20th Annual Cherry Blossom Festival. Starts on Saturday from 11:00 AM to 6:30, and Sunday from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So there's dancing, there's food, there's taiko drum, there's martial arts demonstrations, tea ceremony, and you can buy some handmade crafts and enjoy the food that is sold there. So please join us for the weekend.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.